Okay. It's 5:00. I'm going to call our closed session to order. Oh, we do not have a... I can do roll call, can't I? Mayor Protem, Mike Laura.
Here.
Councilmember Orozco.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Here.
Mayor Knight, I'm here.
All right.
Okay. There are no adjustments or disclosures or anything here. So at 5:03, we are going to move to closed session. Thank you. Good evening. It's 6:25. We are coming out of closed session. It's good to see all of you here tonight on this rainy evening. Do you want to report out of closed session, Mr. Pinkney, while we get a little more set here?
I will. The council met in closed session on item C, which was conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code, Section 5495, 6.9D2. Three potential cases. There was no reportable action taken on that item, item C. As to the other items, they were not discussed in closed session, and they've been continued to the end of the meeting. So that... The remainder of the closed session will occur at the end of the meeting. At the conclusion of that closed session, the council will come back in and will report out any decisions that were made that are reportable actions in open session. The public is entitled to remain until the council comes back from closed session at the end of the meeting. There just... There wasn't enough time available to cover all the items.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pinkney. Okay, we're going to start our regular meeting, and we need roll call from our city clerk, please.
Councilmember Orozco.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Here.
Mayor Protem Lada.
Here.
Mayor Knight.
I'm here. Okay. Any action or requests for absence or anything like that? We're good? All right. We have a special treat here tonight. And it's our Brownie Girl Stouts. I'm going to jump a little bit here. I'd like to bring in our Brownie Girl Scout troop for... To do our pledge of allegiance. Oh, right there. Hello. Good evening. If you'll all rise, please.
Put your right hand over your heart. Ready. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Is Mr. Westholder here tonight? And please, Brownies, please don't leave. We're going to bring you back up, okay? Mr. Westholder for our invocation.
Please join me in prayer. Gracious heavenly Father, first of all, let me thank you for the rain. Thank you that you are blessing our state with an abundance of rain and snow. We desperately need it, and we're grateful that you've heard that prayer. Lord, second, I ask you to continue to bless and be with the family of Jeff Fox. We thank you for his service and all that he meant to this city, and he will be sorely missed. And now, Lord, as we conduct the affairs of the citizens of this fair city, we pray for your guidance, your wisdom, your grace. Lord, we live in an age where everybody has an opinion, and everybody wants peace, and everybody wants something done, but they want it at the other guy's expense. Nobody wants to contribute. So I pray for these who have sacrificed their lives in politics to serve this city, that you would grant them all the grace that they need to help the citizens come to the good and right decisions for this community. We pray for an increase in the tax base, that you will bring more revenue into this city via more business. We pray that you would bless everything that the city does. And we thank you for another year, and we thank you for this time. I ask this in Christ Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. And if our Brownie troop will come up over here, past this police officer, and come up front with us, would you like to do that? Come on up. Mom can come too, please. Hello, girls. You know why you're here tonight? You wrote us a letter, didn't you? Would you like the lineup right here? Must have been all this. These young ladies wrote us a letter that we read at our council meeting last time we were in session. And what was it for? Some rocks that were over at the Chatney Center. And there was a man back there. His name is Mr. Sherwood. And you know what? He wrote you a letter back. Bob, do you want to come up for a minute? This is Mr. Sherwood. And in city government, when somebody writes you a letter, what we do is we respond back to it. And so you guys are starting out really, really early. And Mr. Sherwood is going to respond to you tonight.
Good evening, mayor and council and Brownie troop. Again, Bob Sherwood, Director of Community Services for the City of Beaumont. My office is actually at the Chatney Center, and I believe you guys meet there, right? Again, I just want to thank you guys for the extra set of eyes. We can't operate a city or operate facilities like that unless someone helps us see stuff. So see something, say something. Give you a little history. The rocks that you're talking about, the entrance to the Chatney Center, are there for erosion control. We put them there because it keeps the dirt from going under the streets, and the streets collapse. They were really tested today. Anybody that got near the Chatney Center today saw that canal fill all the way to the top, full of water, 15 feet high, and the rocks saved the street. So kind of pro and con on that part of it. And the center is faced on your side, the side that you're supposed to be on. And then the street side is open. We're going to put some signs in the rocks telling people to stay off the rocks. And the hedges that come around the entrance to the Chatney Center, we're going to let those get a little bit bigger and thicker. That way, maybe people won't go over the hedges into the rocks. Okay? But again, thank you for your help, and we will take care of that for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
And on that note, what we did is... Our city wants to thank each one of you, and we have a certificate of recognition to put in your book of Brownie Things. One for each of you with your name on it. And I'm going to give this to you to fill out. And could we have a picture? Thank you. Okay. We're going to have a picture. Can you put your laptop down? Oh, yeah. We need to have them stand on chairs. Yeah. Do you want to move forward here? There we go. How's that?
Okay, ready? One, two, three. Okay, perfect.
Thank you. And I have one more thing. I need you to help. We're going to sit down here, but I have one more thing I need you to help me with, okay? And it's something since I... This is my last night as mayor. And so if we could all sit down... And I'm going to have the Brownies come back here behind us here. And I want to show you something else that we do in our city. And this is about my... And I need you to come up behind me. Come up here, okay? Each of you, as you know, I'm terming out tonight as mayor. But one little last thing I want to do, and it's on behalf of my parents. They sit in, and they're at home. They watch this. They know all of the players, and they watch on a regular basis by mom and dad. But I want you to help me cheer my mom and dad on because I want to recognize them for being married. This is 63-year anniversary. So if you'll please all help mom and dad. This is it. Love you. Thank you for your prayers. Thank you. Thank you for indulging me. And my father is a Korean and WWII veteran. And my parents married when he was on leave in the Navy. And they got married in Redlands at the Austin Tensia. So this is a big deal, 63 years. I won't ever make that, so... And I want to thank our Brownies for being here. Thank you. Okay, thank you for being here. Thank you. Thank you. So let's give our round of applause. Okay. Now... Are there any approval or adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, mayor. I'd like to note for the record that item 5A3 was moved up, and it has already been presented.
Okay.
So I don't know if there's anybody in the audience that wants to speak on it before we move on.
3A?
5A.
5A?
Number 3. Response to written comments.
Oh, okay.
No. I don't have to speak.
No, okay. All right. Anything else? Any other housekeeping?
Now would be an appropriate time to let the public know that we will no longer be taking a break to change tapes. It will be council's discretion as to when we will be taking breaks.
Okay. Yay. So nobody is going to be stuck in mid-sentence or more, and we don't have to say you have to stop. So that will be good. Okay. Are there any other recognitions, correspondence? Okay. All right. We have one more little thing to do here. And this is to close out 2016. And it's basically our pathway ahead, 2016. Won't be long, but it's just a little synopsis to share with you. So it's almost time for me to pass the gavel to your new mayor. And I'd like to take a few moments to reflect, give thanks, and to look to our city's future. The future will be full of difficult choices, absolutely. But they will occur with transparent information, full of public deliberations, and with the highest ethical standards. We have been creating a model this last year for good governance. Our city has had a turnover in some key positions that would have stalled or paralyzed most organizations until they were filled six months later or more. Yet, we did quite the opposite. We stepped on the gas and floored the accelerator, literally, for our community. How we responded to the challenge and what we have accomplished is dramatic. When you consider, and I'm just going to give you a small sampling of what we've done. Once we got a clear, accurate, and professionally-developed recommendation on our finances, this council immediately took the first step to stop the bleeding and live within our revenues. We have proposed a list of new financial management policies drafted by our interim city manager, Elizabeth Ertiaga, and taken from the best practices in the state of California, basically. And this will help ensure the city's finances are professionally managed and accountable going forward. The transparency that the city is now practicing is unprecedented level for us. The budget clearly states our financial condition. There's more to come. We're still working on it with our capital improvements and that sort of thing. You can get the information online. It's all there. We have professionalized our business practices. Most of our long-term contracts with companies have been renewed and rebid. We have reorganized the city, and this is major. We now have staff to oversee contracts rather than rely on contractors to oversee other contractors. We have new standards for hiring, testing, and evaluating our employees. And this was tough because we needed to bring the city up to standard like other cities are doing. We have hired new independent auditors, which was very, very important. Our interim chief of police has partnered with other specialized agencies to assist our modestly-funded police department. He's also putting more emphasis on neighborhood watch and social media. Have any of you hooked up to Nextdoor yet? I just saw it yesterday. It's just on its way out there, so keep your eyes out. We have reached out to the community and re-energized or created new opportunities for citizen involvement with audit, public safety, and now the financial standing committees. We have set a new tone and expectation that we will communicate and work with other special districts and cities to pursue mutual opportunities for better service or saving money. It has taken all of us, everybody, everybody, the entire community, working together to repair and improve our city. I wholeheartedly want to thank our interim city manager and Elizabeth Ertiaga. She stepped in there, didn't take more pay, worked night and day, and took us forward. And then we had our city attorney, Mr. Pinkney. When they came in and we interviewed them, they were ready to hit the ground running, and that is what they did. And they've been ever since, just full speed ahead. And then all our city staff. I know it's been really rough on you, and it's hard. It's hard for us to make the decisions that make it difficult for your lives. It is. And you rose to the occasion with doing more with less, truly. And I appreciate your willingness to assist us in identifying issues and not being shy about recommending wholesale change. And then council members here. It's been tough. We lost Mr. Fox over the holidays. That's very difficult to deal with. And tonight, I hope that when we close, we can honor his memory. But to my council members, for your role in putting the city on a dramatic new pathway. It takes courage, and it takes people that are willing to make huge changes and tough decisions. And this has been an incredible challenge of motivation, ethics, and resolve. We have worked together, respected our differences, and made the difficult decisions that we had to do. We had to. And finally, I want to thank the citizens of Beaumont for providing your input, your support, for rolling up your sleeves and joining some of our committees. It's really important, that involvement. And it's wonderful to have that involvement in our community. A new thing, we're going to be revisiting our master plan this year, and that's a good place for input if some of you are interested in that, have that ability. So we are set to move forward and continue with this transformational effort. We will continue increasing capacity, professionalism. Oh, I thank you for the opportunity of being your mayor. It's been quite a ride the last few years. But there is nothing better than being out in our community. It's a wonderful place to be. And I'm looking forward to what we will accomplish in 2016. So thank you. And on we go. Okay. Next up, public comments. Do we have... I see we have a number of public comments. Okay.
Mayor, we have one speaker on a closed-session item.
Okay.
Would you like to do that before a public comment?
Yes. Well, how do you want to handle that?
It's public comment period, so...
Public comment, so that would...
This is on the agenda item.
Yeah. It's an agenda item. It's up to you, mayor, if you want to let him speak now or wait until the end of the meeting to speak.
I think we should just have everybody speak while they're here, so... All right. It is 6:45. I'm going to open the public comment period. These are items that are not on the agenda. And any one person may address the city council on any matter not on this agenda. If you wish to speak, please fill out a public comment form provided at the back table and give it to the city clerk. There will be a three-minute limit on public comments. There will be no sharing or passing of time to another person. State law prohibits the council from discussing or taking actions brought up by your comments. And so you each know, if we have some people that haven't been here before, you each have the three minutes. There's lights that's green, yellow, and red. When it turns red, that means your three minutes are up. And please respect that. We try to give everybody that... Do the same for everyone. So at three minutes, please, don't give us a rough time. We will ask you to commence. So on that note, who's our first speaker?
Becky Watley.
Okay.
Is this on the closed session?
This is on the closed session.
Okay.
Right. So I appreciate you taking that. I'm Becky Watley. I work for SEIU Local 721, which represents a lot of the employees that work for the City of Beaumont. And I wanted to... I was going to comment after the fact of closed session, but it turns out that you didn't actually look at the negotiations that it was mentioned that you would. So I'd like to just say this. I'm here representing the members of SEIU. They're your loyal city employees. And we have concerns about the city's attitude and its philosophy. We wanted to ask you how much has actually changed since the former city manager was here. There are those who are in charge now, who were groomed by that former city manager, who were raised, if you will, with philosophies and actions. And we want to say that it appears that there are some that are going forward even after he's gone. Filtering of information and keeping the council in the dark are two of our concerns. I won't say don't trust your staff. I appreciate what you just said, mayor, about what they've accomplished and how much you appreciate their hard work. But I will say it's important to learn from the past. And emphasize, do not blindly accept, please. Ask questions. Ask for documents. Do what you were elected to do, which is to make informed decisions. And the only way that you can make informed decisions is to get the information. So I'm just here to emphasize that and to ask you to ask for the information when you're in closed session. Do not accept verbal information. Do not accept just a pat on the head that they've got it taken care of. Please ask for the documents. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I just wanted to, for the record, be clear that that item will be covered in closed session
Right.
at the end of the meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pinkney.
Yeah, that's item B. Closed session, item B.
Okay.
Next speaker listed as Debbie.
Happy New Year. I was here last month. I was told that our agenda item that we had brought to your attention would be on this agenda, and it's not. So I'm a little frustrated with that. To remind you and the new mayor, a car crashed into our house after we complained to the police and to local HOA and everything for over a year. And nothing was done. And so originally, I was going to come up here and start complaining about the police. But then I realized that I think they're doing the best that they can right now with what you guys have given them. With 60 officers at one point, and now they're down to 35, is not acceptable. It's not. I'm a citizen. We pay $7,000 a year in Melrose. Where does that go? The shooting in Redlands that happened last month, that was 20 miles from here. If that were to happen here, there's not 35 officers on duty right now. What would we do? You know, I... I'm a little frustrated that what originally turned out to be the car crashing into my house is more like the police, I think... I wasn't going to be their speaker, but they need your guys' help. If you guys live in the city, and the people I was just sitting next to before they left, they have drive-bys by their house. I moved here from Orange County. I don't need drive-bys by my house. I didn't move to Santa Ana. You know, you guys need to find a way to get these guys help. And, you know, they said they were going to put signs up at our house, down our street, because it's right by an elementary school, to get the people to slow down. Because the car that hit my house was doing 65 on a residential curve. And the sign was there for a week, and then it left. Because it's in front of Walmart, where it needs to be. But there's one sign. There could be officers out there, and not just at our school, out in front of Sundance this morning. People were flying by that school. And the officers do not have the manpower they need to do their job. And it's going to be a matter of time before one child gets hurt or killed or run over, or even on my street. You know, I'm a little unorganized. I should have had notes, but I'm... I mean, and you guys promised me that my agenda was going to be on today. Do you guys have any updates for me? Anything? Have you guys done anything? Mayor, you told me last month that this was going to be talked about. Where is it?
By law, that I can't respond to you until you're done speaking.
Oh. Everybody else okay? Okay. No. But seriously, you know, this is a great little town. I didn't want to move here originally because I'm an Orange County girl, but I love it. The schools are great. The police are great. But get them the help they need. I just can't believe I'm doing that. But I want our street safe, and if there is another... Ah, damn red light. All right. I'm done.
Okay. We appreciate your comments, and is that not on the agenda?
Mayor, item 5A2.
5A2.
With recommendations.
5A2. Five... Item... Would you give with somebody?
5A2, that's yours. We also have recommendations. We can... If you want to move it up on the agenda, we can discuss it now, or you can wait until city manager approves.
Why don't we move it up? We're talking about right now. Is that okay? Let's go ahead and finish our public comments while they're figuring that out. Our next speaker.
Listed as Casey.
Good evening. That lady's better half. So I'll be shorting to the point. My concern is for the kids, my kids and the kids on my street, given the fact that the car did come at a high rate of speed and lands across the front of our house and crashed into a neighbor's car. I think it's more a concern that it'll happen again, and this time, we won't be so lucky. Because no one was in the car, and the kids happened to not be outside. So with funds being what it is, I was wondering if there would be considerations of streets that neighbor elementary schools, that approach elementary schools, Anne House for one, and Sundance for another, that they put up school signs with flashing lights or those little bumps all over the road that kind of make people go, oh, okay, what am I doing? It makes them kind of wake up a little bit. Some kind of warning to get people to pay attention. Because this person was obviously, for her own reasons, not paying attention. But at least we could do something to get people to kind of go, okay, there's a reason I should be slowing down here. There's a lot of kids up and down this street. So it's more for the safety of the children that I want things to be made more visible and so people pay attention to them rather than just go about their daily lives and speed around corners and just kind of disregard it. So I'd ask that the council consider that around approaching streets, elementary schools, for the safety of our kids. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And that is on item number... We will be talking about under your reports, right, Elizabeth? under, about, under your reports, right, Elizabeth?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so we, that will be coming forward, and we will discuss it more. Okay, let's continue with our public comment period.
Next speaker, Judy Bingham.
Judy Bingham, 115 Minnesota. I am so happy this is the last time Brenda Knight can ever gavel me down. She is going, going, gone, and she should never come back. She spent years as the mouthpiece for the very corrupt Alan Copanikus, so I hope you're proud of yourself. The next thing I wanted to talk about is something that happened at the December 1st meeting, just in case the public hasn't figured out how Mr. Orozco swings. We cannot provide infrastructure for our current residents, and yet, item 9H, which was on the consent calendar, and I hope you're proud of yourself, too, when that happened at 12:30 a.m. on December 1st, was sitting right there, and Mr. Orozco gave a big old thumbs up, oh, don't pretend you didn't do that, to the party that brought this, they sat there until 12:30. When I taught, when I, and then the meeting was over, when I tried to talk to him about it in the hallway, and I said, I saw you do that, what decorum, he laughed and, you know, didn't have much to say, except taunted me, and then as I drive home, I see him in the, right behind me, laughing. He was so proud of himself, so I want the public to know how you swing. I think we've all figured it out by now, though. Another thing that has happened is, on December 7th, I've made public record request, and for the list of owners of the bonds shown on the registration books as of September 1st, for the following, city of Beaumont, CFD 93-1 Melrose Bonds. And we've been waiting for this for a while, and they have to keep this by law, and the city says they do not know who the bond owners are, and do not maintain a list of such owners. The bonds are registered in the name of CD &amp; Company as a nominee of the DTC. The trustee pays the bond owners and provides notices.
I want to thank you for your comments.
Gavel me down.
Your time is, your time is up.
Bond owners through the DCT system.
Okay, let's take a break.
Mr. Copanikus told us...
Son, are you, can you hear me okay? Please be respectful. Now, if I let one of you go longer than another, I mean, we have to keep, it's just not fair to the people in the audience, it's not fair to anyone, and so we are going to maintain that, three minutes, and so, please, going forward, when the, the light turns red, if you will be respectful and decent enough to just be done. Thank you. All right, our next speaker.
John Swain. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
John Swain, 1061 Palm Avenue, representing Fidelitas Legal Architects Group. The matter I'm here to discuss kind of gives an overview of what everybody's been talking about, and it all boils down to public corruption. You know, it's a sad thing to say when, you know, white-collar crime rings are allowed to engage in this type of conduct, that the end result, obviously, for everyone to look at for themselves without having to explain it in such detail, would be to look at Operation Greylord. You look to Operation Greylord, and you're going to see the events that are going to play out here, at least locally in Riverside County, you know, as the other participants in these conspiracies against rights. It's, it's clear to me in reading the weekly newspaper, the Record Gazette, that the, that the city lacks leadership, and that's the real problem, is that we don't have the leadership being provided to implement or put these professionals that we need to provide the services that we need in order to do the things that we need to do. We're leaving tens of millions of dollars of, of money on the table every year, why? Because we, we don't have the ability to perform the proposal to get the contract, so it's sitting there waiting for us to come take it, but we, but we don't have the people who are educated to write the proposal and get you the grant money. I mean, the, the money is sitting there waiting, you know, and so now the city wants to cut the budget and reduce its infrastructure by eliminating some of these experts that are desperately needed, you know? Oversight is very important, and we have to understand, you know, that it's only going to come from the proper leadership, and, and I only play my part as an expert public member of the California Consumer Advisory Council, and doing my pro bono work here in Beaumont has brought me to a lot of community individuals on a lot of different aspects. I kind of, I'll do, I take any case, I do criminal cases, doesn't matter, when you're, when you're your own attorney and you have your own private practice, you can do those things. And so I've become well-known, I don't advertise, it's all word of mouth, and before you know it, people are on the daily, are Johnny Laws their, their new legal advisor to direct them in the right way, and so that's what I at least try to show, is a different type of interpretation. That's why I use Operation Greylord, because you go look at that, well, I believe that the one here in California is going to be even larger. Over 100 judges federally indicted, I think it was 109 attorneys, this is all, all occurred in the state of Illinois.
Mr. Swain, I want to thank you for your comments.
Thank you for your ears for the three minutes, and...
Our next speaker.
Dr. Blair Ball.
Dr. Ball, there you are.
Mayor, council, good evening. I believe something very telling happened earlier in public comment this evening, and I just wanted to follow up with that. One of the persons who spoke was a young lady representing SEIU, whatever that means, I don't know, but anyway, saying that there are employees here within the city who feel that they have some concerns that aren't necessarily being met. And on that note, I would encourage the employees within the city, if they do have some concerns, that they would document those things and forward them to Mr. Pinkney or to the council members. I believe that is your duty. Many, many years ago, when I was a young man, and serving on the Beaumont Cherry Valley Water District, a employee came to me, and took great courage on his part to do that, and suggested that there were things happening within the water district that weren't appropriate. And I listened to them, and with his help, and others, we were able to make some changes within the water district, which ultimately resulted in the replacement of the general manager, the replacement of the attorney representing our district, and several key staff members, upper management, because they couldn't understand that a new day had dawned, and that business was different than what it used to be. The cronyism, the nepotism, the favoritism was gone, and I believe we have a better water district for that. So I would encourage you, as council members, if someone approaches you from your staff, to listen to them, to encourage them, to give you documentation and so forth, to make this city a better place than what it is right now. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is that all we have?
Yeah, no further speaking.
I'm going to close public comment at 7:05. And we're going to go to our council reports. Mr. Orozco, would you like to start?
Thank you very much. Just want to be quick. First of all, Madam Mayor, I want to thank you and congratulate you on...
Surviving?
Surviving. I know it's been a tough year, and a tough cycle for yourself, kind of going from one end to the other, and, you know, I think that for us to move forward, we're going to have to work together in terms of, to achieve the goals that we, to achieve the goals that we have set, I think, as a council. And again, I want to thank you for helping us to steer that to the right direction as a whole. We have to work together, and it takes somebody up here to, to have that experience and that ability to do that, and I want to thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, appreciate that.
And as, as for, I guess, I'm going to leave it at that, so, and I want to wish everybody a happy new year as well, so.
Okay, is that it? Okay. Mr. White, you're up.
Happy New Year, everyone. I wanted to start by just saying a few words about Mr. Fox. He always showed me the respect, even when I was on the other side of the podium here. I believe that he sincerely regretted and accepted responsibility for all the, for a number of the issues that we uncovered that happened under his watch. I believe he was helping us over the last year by making the right decisions and making the right votes to continue to move us forward. There were a number of times when his leadership up here, I believe, turned the votes into the right direction. I'm glad that I had the opportunity to get to know him on a personal basis over the last year, and I hope that when we address appointing someone to fill his seat, that we will keep all of this in mind and try to appoint someone who will continue to move us in the right direction. And I, again, I just wanted to say a few words about Mr. Fox. Mayor, I too want to congratulate you on the last year, I know at times I can be trying, and, and you have also shown me the respect that, that I appreciate. I know there's been a number of difficult speeches that you've had to make, that I think you, while I may not always agree with you, I think you represented the city well in some of those tough speeches. And also, I want to finish by saying 2016 will be a better year than 2015 for the city of Beaumont. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. Mr. Laura.
Happy New Year, everyone, and Mayor, I'd like to, I'd just like to thank you for the direction that you provided us, the stability that you provided us, and keeping us in line when needed, so I do appreciate all your efforts and the representative you are in the community. This speaks volumes for you.
Thank you, Mr. Laura, I appreciate that.
I'd also like to thank the Citizens Volunteer Patrol for their work that they did at Winter Wish, they did an outstanding job, it's a great group of folks, very friendly, and their interaction with the citizens of this city was, was fantastic, so just wanted to say thanks to them.
Okay, thank you, and thank each of you. We've, we've done, we've been through some tough stuff together up here, so. Madam Treasurer, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council members. The Standing Financial Committee, I've met with staff to begin to set up the framework for the first Standing Financial Committee meeting, which we will hold by the end of the month, which was our commitment in December. I've talked to legal counsel about introducing ethics and Brown Act content into the first Standing Financial Committee meeting, so the agenda should be developed and posted on schedule and the meeting set aside, so I believe that we'll actually be effective with launching that in January as we projected. So that's going to be a major accomplishment to make sure that we begin 2016 with an effective launch of that. I've met with staff to go over the warrants, and I also was involved in interviewing one of our candidates for the RFP, so all of that process went extremely well, and staff was very well-prepared for every one of those meetings that I had. And thank you very much, if there's no questions on the warrants, then I will go ahead and turn the meeting back over to you, because we do have a long meeting tonight.
We have a long meeting, are there any questions on the warrants? Are we good?
Good.
Everyone's good? Okay, thank you, Madam Treasurer. Okay, item number 4A, discussion and action to fill vacancy on city council by appointment or calling of a special election. Are there requests to speak on this?
Yes.
Okay.
There is one request.
How about we open that at 7:10?
Our first speaker is, our only speaker, John Dyson.
Mr. Dyson? Oh, there you are, okay.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree that our city council really does need to fill the empty seat left by Jeff Fox. What I do not think that our city can afford a special election to address the issue, I therefore have a suggestion for filling the council position. Treasurer Nancy Carroll was the top vote getter in the 1114 election, 4,044 citizen votes, far outpacing any council candidate. I and many of my friends sincerely recommend that Nancy be appointed by you to serve out Jeff Fox's remaining term. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is that all we have?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Do we have discussion? Staff report, yes.
Okay. The governing law is Government Code Section 36512, and that addresses the issue of filling council vacancies for general law cities, and pursuant to that code section, the council shall, within 60 days from commencement of the vacancy, either fill the vacancy by appointment or call special election to fill the vacancy. The 60-day time period commences or starts to run on the date of the vacancy, which in this case would have been on Councilmember Fox's death, which I believe was on December 15th. Because his seat became vacant on December 15th, the council would need to fill the vacancy no later than February 13th, which is actually a Saturday, so you roll it back to February 12th.
February 12th.
Is the deadline. The process for appointment, if you elect to or choose to fill the vacancy by appointment, you have to appoint a city resident and registered voter, they have to be both, and you do that by a majority vote of the city council. That can be done at a regular meeting, or it can be done at a special meeting of the council between now and February 12th. The person that's appointed to fill the vacancy would hold the unexpired term of the, for, for the unexpired term of the former incumbent, which would end in November of 2016. There is no, there is no law or rule in terms of the, the manner in which you appoint someone... There is no law or rule in terms of the manner in which you appoint someone to take that position, if you choose to go with the appointment approach. And council may choose any selection process that it desires that's fair and reasonable. For example, the council might choose to solicit applications, interview applicants at an open and public meeting, and then interview them either collectively or individually, and then nominate and vote on someone to fill that vacancy. Or you can even move tonight, if you so choose, to fill that vacancy. You don't have to go through that process. That's up to you. And then in terms of a special election, if you go the route of calling a special election, you have to call the special election within 60 days, again, by February 12th. And if you call the special election, the election has to be held at the next regularly established election date, not less than 114 days from the date that you called the election, which in this case would be the June 7th, 2016 election. So that's when it would occur. A person that's elected to fill the vacancy holds the office for the unexpired term of the former incumbent, same as an appointment. If you do decide to call special election, you do that by proclamation. We've prepared one for you if you choose to go that route this evening. And then lastly, there's the issue of what the cost would be of a special election, and I'll refer to the city clerk to give you the information, since he's been in contact with the registrar of voters.
The registrar has estimated, in order to piggyback with the county at the June election, to be between $12,000 and $22,000.
Is that it?
That's the staff report.
That's it?
And I'll turn it over to you for discussion.
All right. I don't know about what you guys, we haven't discussed this, but I've taken a number of people asking about what we're going to do, and I told them to look at the agenda tonight. You know, we haven't decided that yet. I guess for myself, the money amount is too much. I disagree with that. But I also think that there are so many people that are interested in council. For me, I guess, I feel like that we need to send it out to the community, like we have with everything else, and let people apply and see where that goes. That's nothing against you, Nancy. I think that you're right in the middle of some major projects that I would like to see you fulfill, as far as being our treasurer. I'm looking forward to seeing you finish that out. So that's basically where I am, as far as-
I would like to comment. You know, I think giving the people the opportunity for us to see a transparent process, as for an election, I don't think that would be necessary, especially in our financial situation. I think the best for us to, it would be, and for the community, best for the community at this moment, because if we're looking at June and then we're looking at November, if you break that down, let's say, at the high cost of $22,000, if you break that down by, what, three months, right, how much it would cost for every month, it just doesn't make sense. And, you know, I would make a motion for us to go through the process to appoint someone to fill the vacancy. And either it is Nancy Carroll or anybody else in the community, we need to give that process, that transparent process, and let it go through there, and let the, you know, best candidate applicant come to the city and present themselves, and let the council here make that determination to fill that seat before that Jeff Fox has left us.
Yeah, there are comments? Mr. White, I see you.
Yeah, I believe a motion was made. Are you making a motion? I would be interested in possibly seconding your motion, but I need a little more details as to the process.
Well, okay.
May I finish? And I want some more discussion before we actually start talking about motions, because I know that there's some things that I'd like to say, too, before we start motioning and seconding.
Well, my motion will stand, but the motion was just to go toward that direction. I think once we decide which way, either we're going through an appointment or going to call for a special election, once we've decided that motion, we can then discuss that item.
Should he table it temporarily, or?
Any council member can make a motion. If it's seconded, then it goes to the council for a vote. If it's not seconded, then it dies on its own.
Then I will hold my second.
Okay. We need more discussion. It died for lack of a second, but this needs to go, more discussion. So, Mr. White, you're up.
My first thought was, a special election, the cost of a special election outweighed the benefits of that. And I still am not sure that I would argue for a special election, but I want to give you something that a member of the community said to me that I think we should keep in mind when we make this decision, and that was, we would not be where we are right now if the community had not had the opportunity through an election to make a change and to speak and to change the leadership on the council and change the council. And now we're going to be filling a position that will be done through a council process as opposed to letting the community speak once again. So I, you know, I consider that. I also look at the idea or the fact that we would be sitting at four people till June. So I'm not sure that even if the cost made sense, that I think we'd be putting a lot of stuff on hold over the next, could be slowing down our activity. But I think we should keep in mind the community and keep in mind that whoever we appoint will have a head's or a leg up, an advantage, in the coming election of 2016. And I would hope that we could look for someone who can help us hit the ground running right away and was not seeking to run for election in November. Now, I know, you know, people can make that promise, and we're not going to hold them to it. I just want these ideas to be kept in place. Now, I would be happy to make a motion that we move forward with the appointment process. And I move that we put out, whether it's a newspaper article, but we put out the word that we are accepting the applications up until a week from tomorrow, this Wednesday, and then either by special, I would appreciate, okay, let me make the full motion. We put out the offer for people to apply between now and next Wednesday, and then we have a special meeting on Monday to make a choice. And then, once we've made that choice, that person will be able to at least have an evening to get up to date on what we're going to be voting on the next day. And I think with that process, I think we need to move forward on this quickly, because there is the possibility, I've seen it at the school board, Mark, you and I were there, and there's a possibility we could end in a 2-2 deadlock. And I think if we give ourselves enough time to address a deadlock and come back, that it's important that we move as quickly as we can on this process. So my motion is that we move forward, it's a Wednesday deadline for applicants, and we interview and seat someone on two weeks from yesterday, which would make it the 18th, I guess.
Which is also a holiday.
It's a holiday?
You can still have a meeting. I'm just letting you know it is a-
Martin Luther King.
Martin Luther King.
Got to honor it.
Of course we'll. Yes. Mark, I wasn't suggesting the other. I'll amend my motion to have the person seated in a meeting to be held at a regular council meeting on Tuesday, the 19th. That's my motion.
Okay. Can we repeat the motion, so we're all on the same page?
Sure. I move.
No, I was asking if the city clerk-
You have it?
Yeah, I do, but I do have a question. Is that going to be enough time for advertising to the public?
It will not be enough time to advertise on the newspaper. The deadline for this Friday was today. We can advertise on the press enterprise, it's just more costly.
Yeah, well, here's my thought on that. I think that anyone, I mean, the kind of candidate that we're going to need is someone who has been paying attention. We need someone who knows that we're looking for a council member. And I think someone who's been following what we've been doing and following our process is going to serve us better than someone who has to have a newspaper ad or article to say that we're searching. Now, I believe that we will get an article in the newspaper. I don't know if, I don't see Laura here tonight, but-
Craig is watching.
Okay. Well, the word's going to get out, and so I just think that anyone who I'm probably going to be comfortable with approving is going to be someone who doesn't need a newspaper article to say, hey, yeah, I might want to run, I might want to name him for City Council. So I would like to stick with my motion, and if it fails, then someone can make a different motion.
Okay. Can we do roll call?
Okay. We have second by Mr. Laura.
Let's take roll call. Councilmember Roscoe?
No, because I'm for the transparent process, so I'm not going to vote.
Okay. So, no. Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Protemlata?
Yes.
Mayor Knight?
Yes. Okay. It's going to go out to the community, and so get the word out. It'll be in the newspaper, people that are interested in applying for City Council.
It won't be in the newspaper.
It won't? It'll be in the press enterprise.
We can run it in the press enterprise.
Yeah. Yeah.
Just to, you know, to end on this item, to get direction from the council, we went ahead and took delivery, not knowing which direction we were going to go, whether it was going to be appointment or calling a special election to prepare an application. Given that there's very little time to get this done, I wanted to provide a copy of that to the council and get direction on whether they're comfortable with the application. Also, provide members of the community with copies. Double-sided document.
Oh, thank you. That's why we have you. You're good.
So you can see in the application, and there's some on the podium, if anybody's interested, it requests basic information. It's an application for the City Council appointment. Name, home phone, home address, email address, fax number, occupation, profession, business phone, name of employer, address of employer, community participation in service, present civil, fraternal, or professional memberships and obligations, question about whether they have any perceived conflicts of interest, how long have they lived in Beaumont, and then on the back page, the back of the document, education, references. And then we drafted four questions, and we looked at samples of applications in other cities and the type of questions they asked. Some just asked for an essay to be submitted on why they would like to be appointed to the council. We went ahead and put in four questions. Please explain your two most important reasons for wanting to serve on the council. Number two, in your opinion, what is the most important asset perspective you would bring to the City Council? Three, what role do you feel the City Council plays in making Beaumont a desirable community in which to live and work? And four, what are the five most critical issues facing the city during the next five years? And then, you know, the idea was to get a head start. If you're going to go with the appointment process and you're comfortable with this application, we can just, we'll be ready to move forward. If there's anything you want added or changed, we're just looking for direction.
Actually, it looks good to me.
May I comment?
Yes, Mr. Roscoe.
Once these applications do come through, and one of the reasons, I didn't want to force the process and speed it up, to give time for staff to review the applicants and sort of do a reference check, I mean, check the information to see if it's true and accurate before it comes to us, you know, if that would be possible. I would feel more comfortable with the amount of applicants that come in with certain information, just for it to be going through staffs.
That's not a normal process as part of an election. As long as, what we would do is ensure that the person is a registered voter and a Beaumont citizen, property owner that lives here. Those are the only two reference checks that we would be able to do. We would not be able to do any kind of background fingerprinting. That's not part of the process for an elected official.
No, not fingerprinting, but like, you know.
Have you done any reference checks on us?
No.
Okay.
We don't have references from you.
You mentioned something about owning property.
It's, they have to be a registered voter and live within the city limits. I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry.
Right. Yeah. So did you all catch that? Okay.
You're good with it.
I'm good with it. Mr. Pinkney, thank you.
You're welcome.
So if there's no changes, we'll use that as the application.
Will it be, so it'll be downloadable? Will they be able to-
It'll be on the website tomorrow.
Okay. So will they be able to fill this out online, too, or?
No, we don't have that capability. We did with the employment application, but that was a sample program that's been longer.
Okay. I saw that. That's why I was asking.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Let's move forward.
Do we need to identify the date and time that that closes?
I have, as part of the motion, I have January 13th.
January 13th.
Be on the agenda for January 19th, and I will request that the press enterprise do an article as opposed to us paying for an ad.
Okay. And maybe we can ask the-
Record is up.
Put it on their website. Yeah. Okay. Sounds good. Let's move on to item number 4B. This is a Resolution Number 2016, establishing terms of office for the mayor and the mayor pro temporary, and rescinding Resolution 2000-45. And the reason we did this, so you know, is that we are behind, and this is something that I had requested, but we didn't get it done because of the issues that we had at the end of the year. Our council is always behind the other cities as far as redoing what we're doing and getting on our, the different committees that we sit on. So that's what we're doing here. That's all it is. Do we have a request to speak?
No, Mayor.
So do I have a recommendation?
Yeah, just one comment.
Quick comment from Mr. Laura.
In that resolution, is it possible to have that done or taken place the first meeting in December, so that the prior council on an election finishes up their last meeting in November, and you bring in new council on the first meeting of December, so there's not that awkward?
It's entirely, it's entirely up to you.
So help us remember what the process was. I think our first meeting that we sat, that we were seated was December, first week of December, right?
Correct.
And then this would have us doing, selecting the mayor and mayor pro tem the following meeting, correct? That's why he's asking to have it moved up. The way it's written here, it just says in December.
Normally, they're done all at one time.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Correct.
That's where I was getting.
I'm sorry. I misunderstood your question. I thought you meant when you were elected, when did you get sworn in?
Right. We were sworn in the same, were we sworn in the same meeting that we had the reorganization?
No.
No.
No. The previous resolution from 2000 had the reorganization of City Council in January.
In January. So I think what Mr. Laura is asking for, it would be the first meeting in December, and this is general, it just says December, correct?
Correct. And my response is, it's entirely up to council. If you would like to add that to the resolution, you can.
I don't know. I'd like to get everyone else's opinion. I personally think that we should add to the resolution here that it is the second meeting in December, because I think that if we're seating a new council the same night we're having that new council decide who the new mayor's going to be, I think I would want a little more time. I know, you know, we're restricted by Brown Act from really having any discussions about how we're going to move forward, more than just a couple council members independently. But I think it makes more sense to have it the second week in December.
If the council is in agreement, somebody can make a motion to approve the resolution with the modification to Section 2, that it would read, "An election shall be conducted with the modification to section two that it would read, "An election shall be conducted every year at the second meeting in December to elect or reelect."
Or first meeting.
I'm sorry?
Or first. I mean, we could make the motion to have it at the second, or to have it at the first meeting, whichever meeting we decide. What do you two think?
Do you two?
You two? You have opinion? Do you have an opinion?
Well, he wants first week. I suggest second week. So, I'm trying to get what your input is.
And Mr. Laura, what's your opinion on why having it on the first week?
I'm not sure what we gain by moving it back another week. It's, it's an item that is typically done by other jurisdictions the first week. They're brought in, they're seated, and then the nominations are made. So, it's just to get it consistent with other jurisdictions.
Like the school district?
The reason we drafted it the way we did and left it open was so that the council that is seated at the time of the election of those offices can decide what they're comfortable with. They may be ready to go and select a mayor, or they may not. They may want to delay. So, we left it open so that it's in your discretion.
I guess for me, I would say the first week, just to keep us in sync with everyone else, which was what we were trying to do.
Right.
And I understand about you wanting to think about it.
Okay. I move that we add to the first week in December to section two, the first meeting in December to section two.
I'll second.
Okay.
So, I guess I should make, should I make a resolution, a nomination to approve the resolution with that change?
Just make a motion to approve the resolution.
I move to approve the resolution with adding the first meeting in December to section two.
And that was second by Laura?
You get that? Yes. Second by Laura.
We do have a late speaker on the item. Would you like to...
On the item? Okay.
Before we vote, or...
For...
For 4B.
B. No, we're on four. Okay.
Yes.
We're on 4B.
4B. Okay.
Would you like to entertain it?
It's a late, late speaker?
Yeah, just submit it.
We haven't taken a vote yet.
We haven't voted yet. Let's let the person speak.
Okay.
Who's the person?
Okay. So, open at 7:36 for...
7:36?
John Hollowell?
I realize this may be a little bit off of the subject, but the question I have in my mind is, you're talking about voting for council members, and what I'm wondering is, in an election year, the person that is going to fill the council position is not certified to fill that position until the election has been certified by the registrar of voters. So, depending on how the count goes, you may have a case where someone is running for office to fill the position that is being vacated by the previous person. So, I'm wondering if that has any impact on your discussion with respect to trying to figure out who's going to be voting on what issue and when.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hollowell. Your comment?
Would you like to take roll call?
Roll call, please.
Wait a second. Sorry. I do agree with that, but we could add a term that says that as long as a full council is seated. Couldn't we? Maybe the first meeting in December where there's a full council seated?
I don't, I don't know what the timeline, I'm not well-versed in elections. I don't, I know there's a deadline for the registrar of voters to certify the elections.
Well, I know last year when it was, yeah, last year when it was not a close count between number three and number four, that we were still sort of up in the air as to whether we were going to be seated in the first meeting in December or not, because it had not officially been. And I think Mr. Hollowell brings up a good point. If it's a close, a close race, or there's a recount, should we go ahead and reorganize without, with one council seat open?
No.
Or more?
No.
Or more? So, I'm thinking maybe we can say the first meeting in December where there's a full council certified and seated, however the legal language of that would be.
Okay.
I amend the motion.
Well, first, you'd have to withdraw your motion, and the second, we'd have to withdraw the second.
Okay. I withdraw my motion.
I'll hold my second.
Okay. So, that was withdrawn. We're going to do over.
So, I move we approve the resolution with adding to section two, the first meeting in December where a full council is certified and seated.
I'll second that motion.
So, that was the second by Roscoe?
Go on to second. I'm sorry.
We're going to fight here.
Okay. I got that. Okay. Want to take roll call?
Here, any clarification?
Still thinking over there.
You know, it's a resolution, so if we need to change it in a year, we can change it in a year, so.
Okay. So, the motion by White, second by Roscoe, we'll take a roll call. Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Protemlada?
Aye.
Mayor Knight?
Yes. Okay. Are we there yet? Item number 4C.
Mayor, that resolution takes effect immediately.
Immediately. Yes. That resolution takes effect immediately. Okay. All right. So, we're moving to item number 4C, reorganization of the Beaumont City Council. And we have a recommendation for actions and steps. Okay. I am supposed to request staff report and status. That's what says here.
When do we do public comments if they're in?
I think we should give the staff report first.
Staff report first. Okay. I'm sure there's a lot of comments there. Staff report? Who's doing the staff report?
I can do. In December of 2000, the city council adopted resolution 2045 for the establishment of terms of office for the mayor and mayor pro tem. Per the resolution, at that time, council reorganized in January. You, immediately prior to this agenda item, adopted a new resolution, 2016, that hasn't been numbered yet, I apologize, changing the reorganization to December of each year. The term of reorganization will be for one year, and that each such officer shall serve a maximum of two consecutive years. Along with the council reorganization, the mayor appoints council members to various boards and committees that related to the operation of the city of Beaumont. There is the steps for appointment of mayor and mayor pro tem in the staff report.
Okay.
And then, also, we've included a list of all of the committee assignments that are currently assigned to the different council members.
Okay. So, you've just adopted a resolution that provides in section two that an election shall be conducted every year at the first meeting in December where a full council is present and seated. So, you don't have a full council present and seated, so I'm assuming the intent was that you would fill the vacancy before you would select the mayor.
Now, you tell us that.
Well, I didn't know what the intent was behind the motion, but...
Well, we need to...
Well, I mean, that may be the intent. I don't know.
No, that was not my intent.
Okay.
We need to fill the mayor's seat. So, now, what do, now, what do we do?
Okay.
We're, this is new ground, people.
You could make a motion for reconsideration of the prior item, and then adjust that resolution to reflect the fact that you don't have a full council.
Okay.
So, and the majority, would somebody from the majority have to make the motion to reconsider that item?
Will you say that one more time?
Somebody from the majority, in fact, unanimous, so any of you can make a motion to reconsider it.
I can make a motion to reconsider agenda item 4B.
I second that.
Yeah. And I apologize, but I wasn't, you know, these things can get political, and I wasn't sure what the intent of the, of the motion was and the way it was worded, so.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pinkney.
So, now, can I make a motion? Oh, we have to vote on the motion to...
To rescind it?
Reconsider. Yeah.
Okay. So, we roll call vote on the rescind.
So, we rescind, that motion was by White and second by Lada, right? Okay. So, let's take roll call. Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Protemlada?
Aye.
Mayor Knight?
Yes. Okay. Passed 4-0, and let's do the redo.
So, the, the language that was in question was in section two. And the last motion was, an election should be conducted every year at the first week in December, and then there was the add-on language.
So, for some legal advice, if we say first week in December, and we don't have a certification from the county in the last election, what happens then?
Then, the people that are seated, that legally hold those seats, would elect the mayor.
And if that is an incumbent who may not have been running, or their seat has not been determined, that incumbent would still be making the vote on the mayor?
Right. They would. Now, if you leave it, if you leave it, the election shall be conducted every year in December, that gives you some flexibility in terms of the date.
We leave it as is.
Yeah.
I move we approve it.
I mean, that's why we drafted it.
Yeah. I move that we adopt the resolution as is.
I'll second.
So, the motion by White, second by Lada, to approve the resolution 2016 as is. Roll call. Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Protemlada?
Aye.
Mayor Knight?
Yes. Okay. That passed 4-0. Now, now, we can move back to item number 4C for the reorganization of the Beaumont City Council. And we've had our staff report, so the first thing we're going to do is entertain nominations for office of the mayor, and I would like to entertain...
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Oh, we have, wait a minute. We have people that want to speak.
Before we do that, there's public...
Comments.
Comments, but I also need to make a comment before we go to nominations.
Oh, you do? Okay.
I do.
Okay. All right.
You want me to go before the public?
Is, do you, would you like to go before or after?
I'll go before.
Okay.
This steps for appointing the mayor and mayor pro tem are good, and I'm fine with that. But in the last election, we got up here, and a motion was made to, for a mayor and a mayor pro tem. No other nominations were open, and when I questioned the process, because that was not the process I had witnessed in years before, I was told at the time by a council member that we can decide to do it any way we want. So, I want to make sure that I understand what's going here, because the way I've seen it done before here, until before last year, and at the school board I see it done, is we accept open nominations for mayor, we accept as many nominations as come up, and then we vote on them in order that they were, the nominations were made. And as soon as we have a nomination that is voted on and approved, that person becomes the seat, the mayor, the mayor pro tem. And as I've seen it done before, it was the mayor first, and then the mayor pro tem, just like you have here. But is this something that's written in ordinance, and we didn't follow it last time? Or is this something that we need to be put in ordinance so that we do follow it next time?
I can't answer either question, because I don't remember December of last year. I'll apologize. The answer to your second question is a question for the city attorney, but I can tell you that I found this on the server, and that's what I put in the packet. This was not something that was created by current staff.
You found it on the server under an ordinance, or just a document?
In staff files.
And I'm okay if we want to, you know, approve this process before we do it each and every year, but I, I would prefer, I like the process you have here, because I think it's the way I explained it, right? We're going to, for mayor?
One of the...
We'll sit here until there's enough nominations in seconds to have a list of candidates, and then we'll go down that list of candidates in order that the nominations were made, until we find someone who gets a majority. Is that, is that how this reads?
That's the process that's laid out here.
Okay.
I can't say or not. It needs to be put into an ordinance, that would be.
I think if, if we're all comfortable with this process tonight, that we can move through it, forward with that, but to avoid the, what I felt was a problem last time, that we do, we do make this part of a resolution, ordinance, whatever it is that we have to do, so that there is no question in the future of the process.
Just clarification.
Yeah.
Point of order? Clarification?
Yes.
Yeah. So, and I just want to piggyback on what Councilman, let's say Laura, sorry. Councilman White had mentioned, so we, through the process, because I would be okay with it, if, from what I'm understanding, that the clerk takes multiple nominations, just like any motions, we have to go through them as presented, right? So, it could be two, or three, four nominations, well, actually, can't make this, but three nominations for mayor, that we would have to go through all of them.
As long as they be seen seconds.
Yes.
Okay.
So, it's still, so there'll be a list, right?
If there's more than one that receives a second. Okay.
Do the nominations need seconds?
I don't think they need to.
No, no.
They don't. They don't require nominations.
They don't require a second?
I'm sorry. They don't require seconds. Anybody can nominate somebody, and then you would vote, you would vote on that, that nomination.
So, we can give the clerk two nominations, and then, from there...
And then, vote on it.
And vote on it.
To, we would start with the mayor first.
Right. Yes. And accept as many nominations as are...
At once. Okay.
Okay. All right. Do we have this figured out now?
Do we hear from the public before the nomination?
Okay. I'm going to open the public hearing at 7:50. Who's our first speaker?
We have no public comments.
Okay. We're going to close it.
We would like to speak. Okay?
Okay.
No, that's okay.
Okay. You have your three minutes.
All right. So, as I've been wanting to stand up and kind of clarify things for what you just discussed for about the past five minutes, is, as long as everything is in conformance with the California elections codes, is what's going to stipulate as to what process is going to be, you know, adequate, you know, and provide everyone the fairness, you know, that should be deserved for you filling that office. And just from my own opinion, well, that's what I would like to say about that, since that's what I would like to say about that, since there was, you take it how you need it, but, you know, obviously if it's an election, well then the California Elections Codes are going to distinguish as to the proper procedure to, to take.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Swain. Okay, we're gonna close the public comment period at 7:52. And, so, number one is to entertain nominations for the office of mayor, and I would like to nominate our mayor pro tem, Mr. Mike Laura. Are there other nominations?
Yes, I would like to entertain a nomination for office of mayor, for Councilman Lloyd White.
Okay. And we don't have to have seconds, right? We just vote, okay? Let's go to a roll call vote.
Okay, roll call, nomination for Mayor Pro Tem Latta for mayor. Councilmember Roscoe?
No.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Latta?
Yes.
Mayor Knight?
Yes, okay, so that's passed 3-0. Congratulations. Okay, now, we need to go to nominations for the mayor pro tem.
Um, actually, it says mayor takes the seat.
Okay. You want to take a seat?
I just don't want to do anything that doesn't—
I'm with— You're gonna make us move twice now. Hey, wait a minute, Ashley, we need a, we need a picture.
Mayor Laura, would you like to present this to Councilmember Knight?
Sure.
Mayor Knight, former Mayor Knight, the City of Beaumont boards this certification of recognition to Brendan Knight, in appreciation for your two terms serving as mayor of the City of Beaumont. Your leadership and involvement in the community improved the quality of life for all residents of Beaumont. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Thank you. We need the picture handed over the gavel here. We got it?
Slow motion, hold on.
Got it?
One, two, three.
Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you. And then, after we have the mayor pro tem seated, we're going to quickly switch nameplates.
Am I gonna be moving your way?
How do you know?
I don't know. Just have that feeling.
Do you want to entertain?
Yeah.
Not yet, we might as well do it all at once.
Like to entertain nominations for mayor pro tem?
I'd like to make a nomination for Councilmember White.
Okay, with no further nominations, I'd like to call roll call. Nomination for Councilmember White for mayor pro tem, roll call, Councilmember Roscoe? Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Latta?
Aye.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes. Okay, change spots here.
It's approved? All right.
It works, I took yours. That's yours.
Do we have the right wires? Can't have somebody else's wire.
Thank you, Ashley.
Great to meet you.
You too.
Thanks.
Had a row with the—
The last part of the process is appoint members to various committees and commissions. This isn't entirely up to the mayor and council, however, I would like to point out that former Councilmember Fox did hold several seats, and I don't see any—
Where did he get that?
That absolutely need to be done tonight.
Yes, just keep scrolling down.
Mr. Laura, may I ask you something?
Uh, sure.
While everybody's looking for their paperwork, I, I'm coming on as the chairperson of the Transportation Now, the T-NOW, and I would like to, in its, in conjunction with Riverside Transit Agency, RTA, and I also sit on their finance committee, so I would like to respectfully request that you keep me there, but other than that, I'm open for whatever.
Okay, so it's RTA?
RTA, and T-NOW.
Okay, then we need an alternate for that?
Yes.
For RTA? For RTA? I'll be the alternate. Okay, so Brenda's the primary and Councilmember Roscoe is the alternate for the RTA? Thank you.
And Mayor Laura, if Mrs. Knight is okay with RCTC, I would like to put my name in for the board member for RCTC.
Okay. I'm sure we can do that.
I'm, I'm good with that, I think that would be good. Good place for you guys.
I would like to be the alternate on that? Anybody? Is that fine? That work? With the, next step is Regional Conservation Authority Liaison. Councilmember Roscoe's currently the, the primary on that. Is that something you would like to continue to do? Continue? I'll lead up for the rest of the council.
If, if you're not interested, I am interested in it.
Okay.
I know it's in the daytime, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay.
Councilmember Knight for RCA, as the primary.
And we need an alternate. Mark, will you alternate?
Sure.
Okay, Beaumont Cherry Valley Park and Recreation District, I would like to be the primary on that. Unless there's any objections, we have a new park manager that we've established contact with, so, is that okay to everybody?
Yes, that's good.
I need a, we need an alternate for that?
Uh, you put me on as an alternate.
Next up is the Beaumont Cherry Valley Water District Liaison. Currently, it's Councilmember Roscoe. I would like to nominate Councilpro tem Mayor White.
Um, thank you, I'd like to do that.
Okay. Would you like to be the alternate for that? Sure. So that is the water district. And we have Beaumont Unified School District Liaison. Is, I'd like to do that, if that's okay with you, Brenda?
I think that's a good idea. And I'll, I'll alternate for you, if you'd like.
That'd be perfect, thank you. Okay, we have Transportation Now.
And that's in conjunction with RTA, and I would like to continue that.
Okay.
Mayor, I'd like to suggest that Treasurer Carol be the second on that, since she is the secretary of that committee.
Oh.
There you go.
Fine with you?
Thank you.
Now, is that an alternate or a second? Because there's, it doesn't—
No, it's, we've, passed, we've generally appointed to—
Okay, then we have Pass Com Liaison, currently Councilmember Knight.
It's early morning, it's emergency management is what it is. If no one else wants it, I, I will continue to do that, but, and we do need, I don't know if anyone else would like to sit on that.
What, mornings is it?
It's one morning a month, and it's early morning, it's like a Tuesday morning.
Hey, can I be asked, can I?
It's, it's, it's good, because what it is, is basically, you interact with the entire community, from all of the communities around, and with the hospital district and its emergency management.
Oh, okay.
Where they share, but sometimes, I had an alternate, so you, so you might want an alternate and even someone from the community.
Okay.
Okay.
Next is Legislative Liaison.
What is that?
Well, basically, we had that when we were traveling to Washington DC to meet with the representatives, right? And we're no longer doing that, so—
It's not in the budget.
No, it's not in the budget, so—
But it may be in the sixteen, seventeen budget?
Correct, future.
So can we just identify that as to be filled at a future date?
I think that's a good idea.
When money's available, or? Okay.
It's not really a committee as much as it is an assignment.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. We have Collateral Agency Committee Board Member. I would like to continue doing that, and if there's a problem with that?
I, I'd like to stay on there, Mark, you want on there?
Yeah.
Okay, so that will continue as is. Mayor's breakfast, I'll do that if nobody else has any objections. We have Erica, currently is Councilmember White, with Jeff Fox as alternate.
I'd like to keep doing that one.
Okay. Councilmember Roscoe, would you like to be the alternate on that?
Sure.
We have Regional Water Conservation, we have Councilmember White, with Brenda Knight as alternate.
Are we still sending representatives to—
Yes, as a matter of fact, I had talked to the mayor, and that was the one where we disagreed, two, we were a two-two, and I did talk to Debbie, and we had—
Do we need to bring that back then, or—
We can't bring it back for a year, but I will still, we, we can alternate back and forth on that committee.
Yeah, I think Brenda would be, I would rather not sit on that committee.
Yes.
I was with Councilman Wa— oh, that's correct, I'm, thank you. And we have the Memorial Committee.
Who is the second to sit on that?
Uh, it'd be me.
Okay.
Uh, we have the Memorial Committee, it was Councilmember Fox, we, and Councilmember Roscoe, would you like to be the primary on that?
Sure, absolutely.
Good.
Do we have an alternate for that?
What is that, when does it meet?
May, may I make a suggestion?
Sure.
If, if, that we do something very similar to looking at a community member to participate on that? Okay.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
That, that committee is the committee that built the memorials out front.
Okay.
So I have a Councilmember Roscoe as the primary, and we'll get a, do we need to nominate a committee mem, a community member at this point? May, may I come back with someone, nomination, or? Sure.
It's up to the mayor, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be fine. Okay, I actually have a nomination. Okay. Julio Martinez, city clerk, would you be interested in being a part of the memorial committee?
Does that meet in the morning, or how would the memorial—
Well, as we dictate.
Yes.
So, in the afternoon? Afternoon, yeah?
I would be honored.
Okay. Thank you. Sure, that's a good idea. Okay, that concludes the assignments. Is there anything else?
The website will be uploaded, we'll notify the JPA boards of any changes.
Okay, thank you very much. So that completes Item 4C, the reorganization of the Beaumont City Council. Next item up is Item 4D.
Yeah, mayor and council, we previously have heard from our consultant Urban Futures Incorporated on a monthly update, the first being December 1st. I realize that we haven't had a meeting, however, we are committed to council, to bring, and the public, to bring you an update, the first meeting of every month, so we have a representative from Urban Futures here tonight. Michael Bush unfortunately is in Northern California on assignment with another client, and so we have David, and David, I apologize, I don't know what your last name is. I can't hear you.
Cyrus.
David is going to come up and give us a brief update on the progress of the reconciliation of the CFD and mitigation fee funds.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Again, my name's David Cyrus, I'm a consultant with Urban Futures, and I'm here to present the monthly update with regards to the reconciliation services for the CFD mitigation funds. If you recall from the last meeting, we had broken down the project into four tasks. Task one was the planning stage, task two was the actual fund reconciliation, task three was also mitigation fee reconciliation, and task four was monthly updates to council. We have accomplished the following since the last time we met, for task one in the planning stage, we provided an additional document, document list to the city that included missing requisitions for 1996 A bond, a 2013 A and B bond, and also the 2015 A through E bonds. We also prepared a detailed work plan that was promised at the last meeting, and we met with the city manager and the city finance director on December 18th to discuss that plan, and that plan was agreed upon at that, at that meeting. Also at the time, the city had gained access to the bond trustee bank statements, but additional access to online requisitions and vendor invoices is still pending, so we're still working on that. As far as task, task two, the fund reconciliation, thorough review of the provided documents has been done, which included the bond trustee statements, the bond official statements, requisitions, and from that information, we created a template to, to actually do the reconciliation, so there'll be an end work product to summarize what we have done, and the template should provide sources and uses for each bond, bond trustee activity, compilation of all the requisitions and invoices by vendor, projects, and hopefully by improvement area. With the template in place, we feel that we should be able to accelerate the, the pace of the project, and hopefully come in before the six-month deadline. Also for the mitigation fee reconciliation, we, we completed a reconciliation of the mitigation fee revenues for fiscal years 13 through 15. We did this by tracing all the revenues from the general ledger, all the way to the cash receipts and the supporting documents, which included invoices and fee calculations. In that process, we noted no major issues. We're also developing, or we did develop a template in which to reconcile the actual mitigation fee expenses. The template should be similar to the one we did for the fund reconciliation as well, so it should, it should compile the expenditures by invoice, vendor, projects, and by improvement area. And this reconciliation of the mitigation fees has begun this week, so we believe also that it should come in within budget and within time. As far as task four, monthly updates, we provided the status to the city on December 1st, at the December 1st city council meeting, we provided an update to the city manager on December 18th. And as far as what we have planned for the upcoming month, again, we're, we're going to continue to, to do the fund reconciliations, go through all the different bond requisitions and invoices, and, and make sure we compile the information correctly. We'll validate any other reconciliation activity to the city's general ledger, we'll propose journal entries to management for any unrecorded activity, and we'll request additional support as needed. For the mitigation fee reconciliation, continue the reviewing reconciliation of the mitigation fee expenditures to the supporting documents, we'll, again, validate any reconciliac, activity to the general, uh, city's general ledger, we'll prepare journal entries to management for any unrecorded activity as well, and request any additional support as we find. And for task four, we'll prepare a staff report for the next council meeting. If there's any other questions, that concludes my prepared remarks.
Any questions from council?
Yes, Mayor, I have a couple of quick questions.
Sure.
Waiting for requests to trustee for additional documentation, are you still running into problems from the trustee?
Uh, yes, a little bit back and forth. I know Onyx kinda has more word with, with the city attorney as far as how that's going as well. Uh, we, again, we've, we've gotten partial access online, but not full access, so we're still waiting on, on them.
Onyx is working with Union Bank's attorney now.
Okay, thank you, that's really all the status I need. And then the other one is, do you have an estimate of how many, you're, you're gonna need the reconciliation of the mitigation fees, correct?
Correct.
Any idea of what percentage of that process you're—
The mitigation, the actual expenditures, we— The mitigation, the actual expenditures, we just started, but I believe we should be finished probably by the end of February, I believe, so...
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you. We have any public comment?
Yes, we do.
We'll open public comment at, what, 8:14?
Our speaker is Judy Bingham.
Judy Bingham, 115 Minnesota. Mayor Laura, I'm very happy, and I believe you to be a man of honor and character, as is Councilmember and Mayor Pro Tem White. Did I misunderstand what he, Urban Futures said, that they now have the Union Bank statements? If they do, why don't you give them to me on a CD instead of waiting until the numbers are blocked out? So you can put them on the website. I've been waiting for this since September 1st, so maybe you could answer that question. And I'm getting tired of waiting for these.
No further speakers.
Do we have all the...
Do you want me to update council on that?
Can you please?
There were three files given to us of Union Bank statements. We did not get them from Union Bank, we got them from another source. And per the city attorney's legal recommendation, the account numbers need to be redacted, and that is very labor-intensive and time-consuming. I actually have a stack on my desk of about 900 pages from one file, and there are three files. And so with all the redaction that we're doing of bank statements and whatnot, it's in line to be done, and we will get to it as quickly as we can.
The city manager can correct me if I'm wrong about this, but my understanding is it came on a CD, then it has to be printed, and then redacted, and then rescanned, so there's a process involved.
And once they're redacted, the speaker is welcome to come into the offices and look at them or purchase copies of them. But until they're redacted, they're confidential in that our account numbers are on those bank statements.
Just for clarification, they can come in and look at them or purchase them, and that is a solution if they're not ready to wait until they've been reloaded, right?
Scanned, correct.
So eventually, they will be scanned and backed up public, so she wouldn't have to pay for them unless she doesn't want to wait for the process to put them up electronically?
Yeah, they can be viewed, with no purchase necessary, they can be viewed. Once copies are made, we do have to charge for the copies, but that can't be done until they're redacted.
Okay. And she can't view them until they're redacted as well, correct?
That would be a call for the city to...
Well, you know, we, as an accommodation, we've made that offer to allow the requesting party to review them, because we've been dealing with her lawyer, we want to avoid getting in another lawsuit over a Public Records Act issue. But my understanding is that they haven't taken us up on that.
There was another public records request having to do with the CFD files that were still in the process of loading. Those were those 30 files that we have. There are boxes of documents that are redacted that are waiting to be scanned, and to be honest with you, I'll have to ask Carrie what the status is. Those may have already been scanned, I don't know. Carrie's been on vacation for the last week, so I'll have to get an update from her. But the, specifically the Union Bank statements that we received on a CD, those, one file has been printed, it can be viewed without the redaction, is that correct?
Well, I, you know, we offered that as an accommodation to avoid a lawsuit, frankly, but the right way to do it, the safest way to do it, we told them they couldn't make any copies, would be to let us redact it, and then she can either purchase the physical copies, or we can then download it and make it available for the public.
Do you have an update too?
I just wanted to clarify that the Union Bank statements, whenever payments were made to vendors, it included their bank information on the bank statement, with their account number and routing number.
Private-party bank statements on there? I mean, we have private-party account numbers on there.
Requisitions on the actual bank statements as well.
Anytime we wire a vendor from our account.
Okay, and then just to wrap this up, obviously, the city doesn't want to be putting out there in the public domain individuals' account numbers and banking information and routing numbers, because it would expose the city to liability, and it's just not the right thing to do with respect to those third parties.
When you meet with Carrie, maybe you'll provide us an update at that point. Thank you very much.
Mayor, we do have one more speaker on the issue.
Okay.
You guys are getting me all kinds of, getting me all riled up today. I know she's talking about the bonds and the Melrose and what's going where. On our bank, on our website, that are, through my husband's credit union, there are routing numbers on there. I mean, I don't understand if, I wouldn't care if my account numbers were there. I mean, if there's nothing to hide, I don't understand why it just can't be given. Since September, that's kind of silly that there's so much politics behind this that it just can't be given. No, go ahead, I, you know, I...
Wait till you're done. Because I'll... I believe with a routing number, you can send money and take money from a bank account.
Well, why don't you guys set up a password like I have with my account?
It's not our account. It would be your account. Would you be comfortable with us putting your routing number on public documents that are up on the internet?
I have passwords, so nobody can get into my account without my passwords.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I don't know her, I just think that, that just, I mean, routing numbers are public knowledge. Any bank has a routing number you can get. You can get a bank account number anywhere. I mean, we have the internet. So, you know, it's not as safe as you guys think, so, thank you.
Thank you.
And if we can get to my matter at some point, my kids have to go to bed. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
No more speakers.
Are there no more speakers on this item?
No, no, Mayor.
Do I have a motion to receive and file?
I move it. Move to receive and file.
I'll second that.
Okay, so the motion was by Councilmember Knight, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem White. Receive and file. Roll call. Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem White?
Yes.
Mayor Lauder?
Yes.
Mayor, may I make a request?
Sure.
I think we could move item 5A up. And then can we take a break after that, if everyone wants us comfortable? Moving 5A up?
Consensus, absolutely, let's move it up.
So we'll go ahead and take under city manager's report, item number 5A.
5A2.
That's the one.
Yes.
Chief.
City Mayor and Council, as Debbie had spoke on November 19th, well, she spoke December 1st, but November 19th, there was a hit-and-run collision that did not result in any injuries. Thankfully, that collision did occur in her yard, hitting a parked car, and then the car came to a rest against a stucco pillar of her house. Since then, when she spoke, made us aware, we were already aware of the collision, made us aware of some of the other concerns. We pulled some call history, looked into the street design. It doesn't, it appears though the street design has any flaws to it, but we do have a recommendation to try to encourage more responsible motoring in that area. Some of those will be posting some more speed limit signs, and also striping the curves that go from Shamrock to Periwinkle, and then from Periwinkle into Mondrayke. What that will help is to keep the drivers from cutting the corners, is what we saw through our ex patrols in that area. So what they're doing is they're not so much, some of them are probably speeding, of course, and then others are just cutting the corner because they can. And so we want to encourage them to stay in their appropriate side of the street. Some of the things that we did to alert the motorists that use that street is we did put the police department, the radar trailer out there. It does let you know what your current speed is. We had the bicycle officers out there, which is our cops team, our community policing officers, and we had patrol officers go out there as well to conduct traffic enforcement and monitor the situation. And so currently, the stage we're at is we've drawn up a diagram that needs to go into our city engineer, and then we need to look at the appropriate width of the street and what type of striping is going to be best for that, for those curves. In this particular case, as well as with the collision, this driver, and I can't really get into it for due process, has some particular issues. That was isolated, this driver, and so it's not a common theme with the drivers in that area.
Couple of comments?
Sure.
I know of a, of a road in Sun Lakes that had the same problem with people cutting the corners. And what they did there was they put the yellow reflective bumpers just around the corner in the middle. And I don't, and it works really well, it works really well at night. I don't know how much it's gonna, what it's gonna provide during the day, but I have noticed that people, people who live right there have told me they're no longer cutting the corners as they were before. I get, I know all over Beaumont, I, right in front of my house, they cut the corners at really high speeds, because I live right off of Brookside, and they're coming through north of the radar at 40 miles an hour, cutting corners. But they're not inside our community yet, that's sort of on the outside. And then the other question I had, I notice through the years of dropping my kids off at school, and all the schools have this problem, Brookside, Tournament Hills, Sundance, and... Anna House, thank you. I noticed that, especially during the first week of school, you have officers very visible at Brookside. Now, I know we're, you know, we're in a position where financially, we can't provide as much services as we would like to, and so we have to look at some of these issues, but couldn't, do you have, I mean, on the first day of school, do you have enough officers at each one of the schools in the morning?
For each regular day or just the first week?
Just, well, I mean, I see them the first week, and it makes a big difference when you see them there. But after two or three weeks in the school year, you don't see them as much. I mean, they're still, you guys are still coming by.
Sure.
But it's not the kind of presence, at least in Brookside, it's not the kind of presence that makes a difference.
Absolutely. And so the first week of school, we take every personnel that we can, put them in the uniform, and take them out of all their regular assigned duties or special duties, and we try to encourage the parents to have responsible driving habits for school, and we hope that that lingers and sets. But it's not sustainable, as the detectives have to get back to working caseloads, and the community policing officers get back to doing what they do, and administrators have to go back to administrators. So a lot of the people you see, they work various things, and we'll open up some overtime that first week of school, just like the holiday patrol, you know, between Black Friday and Christmas Day, you see a lot more officers in the commercial areas, and so we do open up some overtime for that. In this case, when we identify an issue that requires the overtime and it's budgeted, then, then we do. But on a normal basis with 11-plus schools, not counting our charter schools, then there aren't enough officers to be at every school. And so we try to move them into a rotation based on, a lot of it's complaint-based, and so when Debbie brought this to our attention, it says, hey, there's, we got to get back into that area and work it. And so that's how we move it, and that's how we move the radar trailers, too. And so we do have the signboard, you'll see the very large one, and we have radar trailers, and we do move them throughout the city.
And one last question, I know this might be controversial, but are you writing any tickets around the schools?
So for this particular school, it appears that we did not write moving violations, and I won't know about the warning citations, because those aren't priority entered, so, we're all usually, excuse me, a month or so behind on warning sites. But as far as moving violations, in the last 30 days, we did not write them in front of Anna House.
I know early on this school year, Brookside, a couple tickets were written, and everyone knew about it.
Yeah.
And instantly, you know, you could see on Facebook that everyone would say, oh, make sure you slow down the right ticket to Brookside.
Absolutely.
So I'm just, not...
No, that's fine.
Thank you, I'm done.
We have any comments from council?
I'd like to ask Chief just a quick question. Do you have the resources you need to help fix Debbie's problem, issue there?
Well, we're going to work on that through our plan, and then through Mayor Pro Tem's suggestion, and talk with our city engineer, and see what's going to work best. And we may say, hey, this didn't work, and we're going to move on to another suggestion. We're going to keep working on it. A lot of it is, it's not the design of the streets, it's the, you know, as you know, it's the motoring public. They want to get their kid to school quick, and then when they pick them up, they want to get out of there quick, and they don't necessarily care about the other parents or their kids. And so we're trying to help them understand that we're all in this together. And we did post that on our Facebook page as well, and we're trying to do a lot more media blitz through the police department Facebook, so we'll get this out there on that as well.
Thank you.
The Chief and I have a meeting scheduled with Dr. Latham on Thursday, and we will bring this up at our meeting.
Yeah, just a comment.
So, again, I hear many concerns, such as Debbie's concern and her spouse, about the lack of resources we have in our police department. And we see it, I mean, dwindling in our city. And so I know, one of my priorities, I know, especially when I ran, my campaign promises was to try to recreate or go back to what we once had in the city, at least to the acceptable truth. So, you know, that's something that I know, for me, we're going to make a commitment to get that back, but we also have to take a look at finding the resources, putting that back into our budget and being able to afford it, basically. So, it's going to be a challenge for us, and that's something that we have to look at as a council. And again, this is where I hope the community, such as yourself, come, you know, with opportunities to speak, to kind of move those ideas forward and help the city out. Thank you.
You, a quick question, Chief. You are, aren't we currently recruiting?
We are recruiting. We have three vacancies right now. We do have applicant and backgrounds, we have some more applications, we have to get their physical testing scheduled, the rain flooded us out for doing some physicals from the facility we use, and we have some, you know, we have a high mix, you know, some people will, we're not going to bring in this community to police it. And then we're also getting some stellar applications, so those are the people we're aiming for. That does take some time.
Okay, so we're working on that, thank you.
We are working.
May I ask one more question?
You may ask one more.
One more. For clarification, though, when we approved our budget, we, in the police officer's budget, we did not approve a budget that would ask you to cut back at all, correct?
Well, the final budget did cut four vacancies for police officers.
Cut the vacancies, but it increased the number of sworn officers, right?
No, so, really on the sworn officers, we stayed the same.
Okay, but I thought there was one position added back.
Well, there was, there was five vacancies at the time, and council added one position in at the end of the budget approval. And so there were four vacancies that were cut.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Do we have any speakers on that item?
Me on, or no, we don't. If public comment is allowed, I haven't submitted a comment card on that, but I would like to comment on it.
Sure.
John Swain, 1061 Palm. You know, with regards to, you know, officer presence, you know, in, around the schools, the amount, whether it be an increase or a decrease, really isn't the important thing that the public and the city needs to be paying attention to. What needs to be paid close attention to is the failure to train our officers to be in conformance with the police officer standards and training. Where now, we have, you mentioned, people are Facebooking about them writing tickets, better slow down, when in fact, there are bigger dangers at risk when we fail to train our officers appropriately, which, according to Senate Bill 719, which is the, how the legislature is to interpret the police officer standards and training for, let's say, high-speed pursuits. So now, these guidelines provide officers, generally, you're gonna have a sergeant, who is the supervising officer. He's the one who has the call to say, go ahead and proceed and go get them, even though there's a potentially hint to a crossing in the crosswalks that are going to be subjected to a, you know, a very possible, highly foreseeable risk of harm, since the legislature has declared high-speed pursuits to be dangerous activity. And I can speak on this issue because, no, there's a, it happened to me personally. You know, the type of work that I do in public corruption scandals, when you're dealing with a lot of white-collar criminals who are in positions of power to issue warrants, or we have judges involved, both, these things, you know, are allowed to happen. Change takes time, and, you know, with everything that's, you know, we see, it's kind of a little bit alarming to me to see individuals who take a certain number of seats, but they don't seem like the confidence is there as far as their qualifications to fill those offices, you know, should be performed, you know, in fulfilling certain duties, you know, as is necessary in any seat. Your federal emergency management seat, that's a seat that is right up my alley. Well, why? Because I specialize in environmental historic preservation with a qualification from the Department of Homeland Security, Federal Emergency Management Agency Talent Acquisitions up in San Francisco. As part of a proposal I submitted for an RFP, they're just looking for qualifications and just me as, you know, I'm trying to rack up these qualifications because, believe it or not, they're as good as a degree that you gotta go pay for from a college institution. So now you, anyhow, I think that, you know, the officer, you know, presence is, the failure to train hinders the integrity of these individuals, and they might not even know that they're the ones who are putting, you know, the public at risk, because in some testimonies, you will see them blame the person who's running.
Need you to wrap up your comment, please?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
One more speaker, mayor.
Who is?
Uh, Debbie.
Okay.
It's the last time, I promise. I appreciate the last comment, which is nice, but I was told before, when my friends moved in, and seven years ago, there were 60 officers, 60. She said there was cops all the time, police officers all the time, always guarding, driving up and down, saying how you're doing. And they were there, and there was a quick response time. And from going from 60 down to 35, and I know personally that they've lost a couple of officers going to other cities. So I would appreciate if you guys have the ability, which I know you do, to find it in the budget, add more officers, so we, because you guys all live in Beaumont, if you guys have an emergency at your house and there's five other things going on, you're not gonna have anybody. There won't be anybody there. Or maybe they won't, because you guys are all city council. But, you know, for the rest of us, response time is important. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. No further. Any comments?
No.
So that is your report on item 2A, or 5A2, excuse me.
5A2.
Okay. Take a ten, I'm sorry. Yeah, we're gonna take a short break.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Well, we just said, "Would be great."
I know.
But we all be...
We'd like to call the meeting back to order at 8:59, or 8:49, excuse me. Next item up on the agenda is item 4E, Public Works, Order of Contract for Public Works Inspection and Plan Check Services. Honorable Mayor and City Council, back in September of 2015, we completed an RFP to provide inspection services and plan checking services for public works infrastructure. On October 29th, the city received nine proposals. A committee of three staff members, the contract finance director, the contract city engineer, and the building official reviewed and rated those proposals. Then interviews were conducted with all nine firms after the ratings, and it was a two-day period of time because of so many firms, it took awhile. On November 30th and December 1st, interviews were conducted. The panel at that time, again, was the building official, the contract city engineer, and the city staff planner. Those ratings are in your staff report for those services. What has been brought forward to you tonight are those ratings of those firms, and with the suggestion that the council not choose one but three firms. This is done in many different cities, and what that provides is, instead of just having all your eggs in one basket, one company, you have three. You divvy up the work evenly between those three. It holds them all pretty much to their A-game because if one does not meet the requirements or starts not doing so well, they know they're going to lose work to the other two. So that keeps them all going. It also provides that extra amount of staff. Because of the resurgence, there's plenty of work and plenty of consultants to handle the work. So that is before you tonight, and that concludes my report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I got questions, but no question. White may have also questions.
No way. I don't have anything yet.
You don't have anything yet?
No, I don't.
Okay. I have some series of questions, so I'll try to get through them real quickly. The proposal that you have brought in front of the council here, how are you proposing that the city, you kind of mentioned that many different cities, right? So how are you proposing that the city execute this particular contract?
Well, what the contract actually would be referred to as an on-call contract. And all three firms would enter into a signed contract for the work. And then as the work becomes available, the work, again, is doled out evenly to the company. So if one developer comes in, and this is all, by the way, paid for by developer fees, when the developer comes in and starts the process, and one company is chosen, and that company is assigned to that particular development, then another development will come in, and then another company would be assigned to that development, and it would continue with that rotation. And as long as all of the firms are meeting their deadlines and doing an adequate job, then it will continue the rotation.
Okay. I understand there was a decision. When was that decision made? Was it made prior to the RFP going out? Was it the decision to go with not just one firm but three firms?
That was never a decision. That's something that I brought forward that I have experienced in every city. I've been a public works director and city engineer, and it's been very effective. The council may choose one firm, they may choose three firms, they may choose five firms. This is all up to the council. I just wanted to bring that bit of experience to the table for the council to consider because it is a very successful way of providing services for the development community and keeping the city protected.
So when you talk about evenly, so let's say we divide it by three, 33 percent, you divide the work, are you going to manage that?
Yes.
Okay, so the city engineer would manage that, and not the public works director?
Whoever the city manager so decides to designate that to. At this particular time, I believe that's something that is one of my responsibilities that I would do for the city. But if the city manager or council decides that they want to provide that to some other person, that's well within the city's right.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to ask a couple more before, then I'm going to, I have more, but I don't want to go all out right now. Moreno Valley, Colton, Rialto, you familiar with those cities?
Very familiar. I was the public works director and city engineer in Moreno Valley for five and a half years.
I had talked to the engineer over there and a couple other people in those cities as well, and I just mentioned it out there, just threw it out there because I wanted to, because I know we had that discussion prior about the direction you wanted to go. But what do you think about the management, the challenge, the challenge of the management? Because I was kind of told for a city like ours, to divide that work evenly out there like that and throw it out there, it may be, well, that's not going to be a maybe, it's going to be a very difficult challenge to manage such a task. You know, you're going to have to have staff to, our staff here, to manage that.
Actually...
That would be something that we would work out at a staff level.
Yeah, actually, the management for that is very simple. A program manager in any city can handle anywhere from five to 10 projects at one time. That's what program managers do. City engineers a lot of times act as program managers, where they have a number of consultants doing the same work. The engineer in Moreno Valley and Rialto was actually my deputy in Pomona, who I trained this very way when I put this in place in Pomona. And so he is very familiar with that as well, so I'm surprised he didn't bring that part up with the, because right now, I believe they have, they just did a call for projects in Moreno Valley, where they have 70 consultants that are on the sidelines waiting.
Okay. So an addendum for you to tell firms, like, for example, to say, you don't have to put that in the RFP at all, you don't have to notify or let the bidders know that this is how the proposal is going to look like, we're going to divide the work into three, and they don't find that out until they get here to the council meeting?
Yeah, but it's, again, a very common practice. Most of your consulting firms are very happy with this situation, because the competition, they feel that they line up good against the other competition, and it's just not down to one firm, they all have an opportunity, especially when you have a booming city such as Beaumont, that's coming out of the recession and just starting to boom, they know there's going to be plenty of work. So it actually, it fosters a very cooperative spirit between the firms, and I found that out when I first put this in place in Chino Hills back in the 90s.
Okay. So no addendum was needed, right?
No.
Okay, okay. Well, I have some more questions, but I'm going to see if my council colleagues have any other questions before.
Can I just add to that? The addendum would not be necessary because this is a council decision, and staff would not know at the time during the bid process whether or not that was going to be set in stone. That's why an addendum would not be necessary. This is only a recommendation. It is entirely up to council whether or not you choose one firm, three firms, or five firms, or throw out the bid.
Wouldn't you need to let the people that are proposing a proposal know that in advance?
No, because it's not staff's decision.
But people are coming proposing them, maybe they don't want to get into an agreement such as that. Now, who wrote the proposal? You wrote the proposal?
I wrote the RFP, and I can tell you that I compete in a number of these. The firms all probably thought it was only going to be one consultant. Again, I've never, ever, and as a consultant, I've never turned my nose up to this particular procedure because it's so common. Consultants are actually a little relieved that, okay, we're still in the hunt. I mean, there's more of us, and we just have to prove ourselves. So it's, I've never seen an addendum for this type of work. It is a, I put it out there as a suggestion to the council, the council can take it or leave it. I found it to be very helpful in delivering projects and providing a service to the development community, and protecting the city. But as the city manager said, it's entirely up to the city council whether you award to one or more than one.
Well, I have more questions, because I also asked one more that came up with here that you just mentioned.
Sure.
Before I pass it over, I'll come back. You just mentioned that this is a proposal you're going to bring to council, so you thought, was this discussed at all before, prior? Were certain contractors who were bidding, were they given a heads-up on that prior?
No, they were not.
None of them at all?
No.
Okay. So they all aware that they were going to compete as just one contractor?
Yes.
Okay.
I would suggest that we could ask the consultants, the bidders, how they feel about that program.
Mayor, I'd like to ask a couple questions. Thanks, Mark. I didn't know I had concerns about these until you raised them. But I agree, and you answered the question as to whether or not the candidates knew before they put in their bids, and I do want to ask them if it would have affected their decision. But let me ask you a couple of questions. Wouldn't a firm, any one of these firms who've bid for this contract, have the number of engineers they need to meet our needs?
I can't crystal ball that they would. You would hope so. I have had the experience of hiring firms that look it on paper but actually don't even have the personnel that they put in their proposal yet. And so, for instance, I did witness this on some of the proposals that we had, they had personnel that worked in other cities listed as their people for working here in Beaumont in the contract. So some firms may have the personnel, some may not. If they don't have the personnel, then, and you only have one firm though, the city then has to go through the process of issuing another RFP, which takes time.
I still have another question for you, but because of what you said in response, Mr. Pink, if a firm comes in and bids based on the fact that they believe they can handle all of our business, and they tell us that they have the engineers and the number of people to do it, and then they are not able to meet the demand, are we locked into a contract with a firm that...
The contract allows the city to terminate on, I think it's, on very short notice, less than 30 days. It's either 10 or 20 days. The contract would have to be modified to reflect what's being discussed here tonight, to have this on-call approach. The contract that was in the RFP that went out was the old version of the contract when we were still doing the job cards. It was some time ago that it went out. So it's been modified. The city's modified its contract since then. But I just want to remind everybody, this is not a bid. It's not a sealed bid. This is an RFP process for professional services, and it's controlled by your ordinance that this council adopted, that provides that a request for proposal is to be prepared, and then it's approved by the council. This council approved the request for a proposal that went out. And then after that, they solicit the proposals, and then the procurement officer, which is the city manager, goes through developing an evaluation process. And then they come back to you with a recommendation, but ultimately, it's your decision, you know, again, as it's been stated by others, it's merely a recommendation that's made you, it's ultimately your call. But if they can't perform, then you move on. You end the relationship.
In the county of Riverside, I just recently went through this process with plan check and inspections, and we did, initially, I wanted to do the three firms that was recommended by our purchasing department, I mean, excuse me, I wanted to do the single firm. Our purchasing department recommended three firms, and what has happened with the county is, you know, we've called a firm to get field inspectors, and at the time, they didn't have anybody available because they were committed to other cities, so I was able to go ahead and go down the list and call the next one. With plan check, what I've had to do, because of the volume that we currently have, is I'm currently using two of our vendors that were successful to do, I think roughly they've got 25 plans each. I've called another vendor, and that vendor has offered staff to come in-house to assist. So it gives the city flexibility to move, because the plan check and inspection process is really dynamic right now. You get highs and lows, so that you can use the plan check, maybe use three of them right now to get the highs down, but when you drop down, you find out who those ones that are, you know, better performers, and when it gets slow, you use them. So it does allow the city that flexibility, at least allow the county the flexibility, just if that helps any.
It helps a lot, but I have another, more of an economics-type question, and that is, you know, the bid amounts here are up to a certain percentage of the revenues collected. And I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, that, let's say, a contractor says, we'll go up to 75 percent on plan checks. They don't go up to 75 percent every time, they're just not going to go higher than 75 percent. So if the hours that they spend on that specific plan check is less than 75 percent, they're not going to go to 75 percent. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So I'm thinking, in my thought, is that if a single firm was working with us, and we built the relationship that they are getting work, wouldn't it be likely, probably, that they're, through economics of scale, in other words, they know the area better, they know the properties, you know, we're not asking developers to deal with different people every time, different companies, different processes every time, wouldn't it be likely that we would get a better bang for our buck with one firm?
Well, that's always a possibility, but it's not really a probability. And I guess the reason I'm saying that is, the processes are the same. What we're aiming for in this proposal is, plan check turnaround times don't exceed two weeks for everybody. If we start seeing excessive plan checks, like third, fourth, fifth plan checks, usually by the third plan check, you should be dialed in. If a firm keeps on bleeding and on the plans and bringing up new issues every time, well, then that is not, that's not going to be cost-effective, they're going to take up to 75 percent every time. So it's not, the processes should be the same for all.
But they're not.
Yeah, actually...
Now, when I read these, they have different timeframes of when they report back to the city council, they have different platforms where they're using a PDF, I mean, there's all different ways they're doing, so the processes are not the same.
But the ones that did not rate as good were the ones that had the three and four-week turnaround times.
I'm only talking about the top three.
Yeah, those are, I believe the top three were all pretty much in two weeks.
They were. I'm just saying their processes are different. They're not the same. Anyways, should we maybe decide if we're going to go with three or one before we decide who we're going to go with?
Well, I would like to kind of go to the public comment first. The idea is, I would like to kind of hear some of the applicants too as well, if we get a chance, ask questions, but maybe go to public comment first, kind of get a, move around.
Mr. Stein, do you have any comments?
No, I get the three, though, with dealing with things that I've dealt with in the past. And I hear that, because a lot of times, I think it would be nice if we would have more than one, so you have a backup. And I'm listening to your expertise, Chris, and how many years have you been doing this?
Over 21 years, four different cities.
Okay.
And three of the cities were, at the time I was in, were the fastest-growing cities in either California or the nation.
Yes.
So, yeah, I've always had to deliver high volume.
And that speaks to me, especially if you'll be overseeing this, and the other comments too, but I personally think we should have more than one. I agree with you, and thank you. That's all.
Mayor, maybe if there's no other, just, well, I have more questions, but like I said, I would like to get an opportunity to hear the public comment first before deciding if we're going to go to three or one.
Sure, we can go with that?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Mr. City Clerk, do we have a public comment?
I do have more questions for you, Chris. Not yet, but, yeah, I want to hear.
We have two speakers, Mayor. Would you like to open at 9:08?
Sure, I'll go ahead and open public comment at 9:10.
Yeah, first speaker, David Weiner.
Good evening, council members and newly-elected Mayor Lara. I'm an accountant, and as such, I kind of dig into the numbers and try to see that every project works out as planned. When I looked at this, and what I see tonight, the grading of this RFP is pretty much an outright mess. I've been following along to see if the procurement process for the city would be fixed, as you guys said it would, but someone needs to explain to us citizens why this staff report is filled with mistakes. How can we trust the integrity of the process and the results before the council? Let me tell you what's wrong with it. Well, actually, let me show you what I'm talking about. I kind of put together a spreadsheet, it's my own work product, but being an accountant, I wanted to look at the numbers and look at the process. There's a spreadsheet in the staff report that had an average of the scores for each firm proposal and the interview process. The scores were added, put in order from highest to lowest, and awarded a ranking. Sounds pretty simple. The person who prepared those averages should have known how to perform a simple function of adding three numbers and then dividing by three to get that average. I think it's pretty basic stuff, but the average score is given for DGA, I think that was the name, their score is actually incorrect. And if you throw out that incorrect score, or correct the score, the ranking of that firm is no longer in second place. There are averages given for firms on the grading of their interviews, and the interviews appear to have been weighted at 50 percent of the final score. How did the person compiling the report arrive at an average score when several scores were not given, or the scorecard was missing completely from some of the judges? Now, if there's no scores given, but there were notes, how do we know what score was actually assigned to that firm? If there's no number present, I would assume a zero, and then you end up with completely different averages and rankings. The RFP issued several months ago has a contract that is different that was published from the one with the staff report. Why did it change? Was it done to benefit particular firms? The staff report recommends awarding a firm with a four-year contract, at least when I read it, and the original RFP was only for one year, and that's the city's ordinance, according to my understanding. Most importantly, why has the city or staff or whoever reduced the requirements for professional liability insurance from $2 million per occurrence to not being indicated as required at all in the staff report? As graded and ranked, the top firm also appears to be the most expensive. Why would you choose that when the city is in financial trouble? We have to save our money. At the best, this RFP is sloppy; at worst, is dangerous and will open up the city to lawsuits, legal challenges, cost overruns, and possibly more of the same that we've experienced in the past. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Next speaker, Mike Taylor.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Congratulations, Mr. Mayor. Just comments on the whole process here. Working with cities that have multiple plan check and inspection firms is something, I mean, that's pretty typical, most of the cities that we do deal with, we do run across that. I mean, it's certainly not uncommon. I think one of the biggest problems that we've faced with that is, again, as Mr. White mentioned, changing people you're dealing with all the time, especially when you have a project that has a long history, and all of a sudden, you're switching firms because of the workload that's happening at another firm. You've been used to working with one firm, so even if you were to switch and you had brought in a new firm, you start working with somebody, they learn the project, they understand the history of the project, the next set of plans, you bring them, they're too busy, it needs to go over to the other firm because their workload is sufficient, you've got to restart that learning curve all over again. What we have done, because of our project's size and longevity in the past, is worked with the city manager and said, hey, look, why don't we just find out what the charge is to pay for the services of a full-time plan checker? So if that plan checker's salary is X dollars a year, let's figure out what that salary's worth for that plan checker, so we pay the city a fee, so the city can pay for that plan checking services, still controlled by the city, still controlled by the firm, but now we know we have dedicated resource, because our project is so long, we know that person's going to be there, he's going to be the same set of eyes looking at it, and he's not also reviewing a set of plans and going, uh-oh. plans and going, oh, my two-week deadline is up, I got to get it back out, because I promised it in two weeks, then when I get it, and he wasn't done, but he had to get it out, so he shipped it out, now he's got a whole nother set of plan check comments that come back. He adds, you know, adds more things to his list the next time, because he didn't have a full amount of time to review his plans. We run into six, seven, eight times going back for plan checks in some instances. So, those are our fears, and we'd be willing to consider paying for individual plan check services and even an onsite inspector on a project as large as ours. So, just a consideration for you. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment.
Last speaker, Victor Dominguez.
Good evening, Mayor. Congratulations on Mayor Lara.
Thank you.
A couple of points real quickly. The last public speaker that was up here, I believe his name was Mr. Weiner, I don't know what his name was, but the individual that spoke earlier, he made some good points that I took note to, and some of the same points that I looked at when I read the information online regarding on how the scoring was taken, was done. The scoring is obviously flawed, listening to the public speaker and going back to the records that are online. Now, put that in one category here. And the other concern I have is, when I have the, here at the meeting, Becky from, Becky Whately from the SEIU comes up and tells this council that, hey, look, if she, if I can remember correctly, she says, you basically have some problems with the staff that pretty much mimics Allen. She said that. I think we're all here, we all heard it, I was shocked to hear that. I hear that first, then I hear the observations of the public speaker who came before me, and it's not jiving with me. Something's wrong, the numbers are not adding up. Becky is telling us from SEIU that there's a problem in-house. The ranking system is obviously flawed. I mean, where there's smoke, there's fire. That's the last I've seen, that's the last judgment I had. So, I hope that you keep this in consideration when you deal with the facts, and when you look at everything as a whole, that where you can see when you make a judgment, that you put all these factors into play. And the last concern I have is with Mayor Lara. I think he should recuse himself from this process, because he does hold the position and has the history with the county, where he does have direct impact from his bosses on Tri-Lake. Tri-Lake has had a contract with the county in 2000, I think it was 2000 and change, back when, they had a contract. They took direction from your bosses, and now you're here in a position to where you're going to vote on a contract with them within the community that you serve. I think with all fairness and all integrity, that you should recuse yourself in this process, so that way, the total transparency is there, and any type of speculation of any type of backdoor dealings is not, is not, comes in question. So, I think, as a man of character, you should recuse yourself, because the county does have a contract with Tri-Lake, and you should not be voting on that here in this community. So, those are my three concerns, those are legitimate concerns, these are something that you have to look at, and you have to make a decision on. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
We do have one more speaker, Mayor, John Swain.
Oh, yeah, this one's right up my alley. It's time to separate the real experts from the egos. This is, when I say right up my alley, all of the questions that you have relating to this topic, I have the answers for you, because I'm an expert in it. Anyways, you only need one firm, and how I would propose to do it, and that's actually what I've been implementing and working on as part of a pilot project, is anyhow, I've received a prime contract as a prime contractor from the Department of Homeland Security to provide administrative oversight at the federal, state, and local levels. As a prime contractor, I am now providing intermediary services, where services are not provided. Let's say, we need an elderly abuse investigator, for which the Department of Consumer Affairs has a vacancy, they have not fulfilled that position, and so now when we need somebody to come and investigate elder abuse, well, there's no professional to come and go at that task. And so, we have to be innovative in our approach. We have to collaborate with the community, with the government, with military as well, you know, in order to create, I guess you could call it a total army. You know, we have to, you know, if we can't answer the questions, and life keeps asking you the same questions, it's because we're not learning our lessons. As a prime contractor, let's say now, whatever it is, on whatever project you might have to be, you know, be using or trying to implement or to get to go through, in my case, it doesn't come out of the city's budget. As a prime contractor, I've been given what's called a multiple award schedule, where now the contractors who now submit a proposal to the RFQ stating that they're qualified, they get paid before they even do the work. All the money is protected by the FDIC, because the deposits are made through an electronic transfer card process, which is then held within USAA Bank. That is the banking institution that I chose to perform and purchase my insurance indemnity bonds from, for the work that I do, you know, just to be in conformance with all of the logistics that apply, you know, to a topic where I can come up here as, you know, one guy who's the most informal person in here, and give you more information than an entire circle of professionals would on the subject, who still haven't answered the questions. So, I guess with that being said, if there's, you know, any questions, and I'd be more than happy even to, like I said, I do pro bono, I do pro bono work. If it's ever a case of how much it costs for any type of work, well, that's, my payment is just being allowed to do the work. After all, that's how I've gained my experience, and that's where my payment comes in, in doing pro bono work, is not, is the experience that you gain.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yeah, I've got a question for Mr. Whiting. The comment in regards to recusing myself, I just want to make sure that I cover that. The Tri-Lake does have a contract with the county, I'm not sure which department that is with, it is not with the Department of Building and Safety, which I'm a building official over, so if I need to recuse myself, I'm more than willing-
It's not a legal conflict, no. It is not. It would have, they would have to be a source of income to you or a source of expense to you personally, so it's not a legal conflict.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have a couple more questions for Chris.
Let me give Mr. Roscoe's questions, and then I'll come back to you. I'm a little, how do I say, hurt, confused, got all these emotions, and it's not, because, you know, part of, let me go, start with this. Part of my campaign promises is, one of the things is try to clean up the city in terms of how we do bids, and the RFPs and RFQs, and how we go about bringing new contractors into the city. I'm very big on transparency, working with the process, and I spoke to you about this before, and, you know, and I mentioned this, a couple of concerns to staff that I had already with this RFP, with this whole entire RFP, and the process, making sure. Right off the bat, I want to tell you three concerns that I have, and I wasn't surprised that someone had brought them up today. But I believe it was, I don't know your last name, I'm sorry, David, right?
Weiner.
Mr. Weiner? I didn't want to call you, wrong name. Mr. David Weiner talked about the math, about this proposal, and I wanted to point some stuff out as well, because I have issues, concerns with this, because you're using the ranking system. And for me, when you're using the ranking system, I'm going to really put myself out there and see what staff is going to propose. I mean, and now I have some concerns, because if it's, it mentioned it's flawed, I think some of the rankings, it's invalid, the process itself may have been compromised, and we'll see that in a minute, because some of the questions that are going to be asked to some of the proposed applicants, as well as, I think, the way we're doing it here, and I'm not saying in terms of going with three or one, but just the process itself, I think it exposes us into liability, lawsuits, and I'm going to kind of go into a little deeper if I can, but I know Brenda, Councilwoman Brenda, mentioned that it's important, and staff consideration in what they do. And I had brought this concern with both the former mayor and the city manager about the ranking system and how it was presented to the council, and kind of a biased approach, and my concerns got even more, so I dug myself deep into there. I mean, I spent a lot of time going through this. I mean, all the proposals, the RFP, RFPs, I guess, was more than one that I had found, and I'm a little concerned about that. But I'm going to ask you openly and straight, you can let me know, but obviously, you were on the, one of the judges, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Now, at this point, the city has not, the staff has not disclosed, or management has not disclosed who the other judges were, correct?
Correct, we did.
It's in the staff report.
Oh, so we-
The panelists are all identified in the staff report.
I'm sorry?
The panelists are identified in the staff report.
They were, okay. Which staff report, because there's a few-
The one in front of you. And it was also given as part of Chris's verbal report.
Okay, so it was yourself, can you mention them for me?
It was myself, it was the finance director.
Can we have names instead of possessions, please?
Yes.
Sure.
It's myself, Onyx, and Keith, the building official, did the rankings of the proposal. The interviews was myself, Chris Vog, Keith, and Kyle.
Okay, so you used four different people?
Yes.
Which has been done on other bids.
Okay, okay.
Staff isn't always available when the interviews come.
And kind of going into that, so you mentioned, now, that kind of clarifies some of the questions for me as well. Now, the package that's in front of us, and there was mention too, that there were several scores missing, and I had asked some of the staff members if it was fully uploaded, but you clarified that, you said everything was uploaded. Are you aware that they're missing scores?
I'm not aware of any missing scores. The scores were all handed to another staff member here, who compiled them, averaged them, and did the spreadsheet.
So, you don't know why they're missing?
I don't know of any of them being missing.
From the website?
Yeah, they're missing.
Okay, Chris doesn't have access to upload to the website?
No, I don't.
But, let me finish, that's part of my questions. So, you're going to recommend us a proposal, and the night before you present, wouldn't it be good for you to check to see if everything's up there, so then we can, as council, making this decision, that everything's up there?
What I saw was up there was the spreadsheet in the staff report. I know a lot of additional items were added, and asked to be added afterwards. But I can't tell you that I went through all 486 pages, or however many of the pages there were.
Okay, yeah, there were several that I had found, and I also found some miscalculations that I'd be more than happy to show.
I would be very happy to see the miscalculations, because anybody can say miscalculations. I would have to see them.
Can you confirm who did the calculations?
Yes, the averages were done by Carrie.
Okay.
When she was in Public Works, yes.
Teaser.
Yes.
Because I wouldn't be saying this, if I didn't confirm it myself, when I went through there and I added everything up and took all the, like I said, I printed them all out, I went through all of them, I added all of them up, I even did a spreadsheet, going through it, I did a spreadsheet to kind of help me out, to understand the scores, how you rank them, because I said I have an issue with the ranking system. But let me go specifically with my questions here, in terms of the system itself.
We have six minutes left.
Okay. Well, for some of the people that were grading it, you know, let me ask you this, because I want to kind of go on record and say this. Did you feel, and I want you to be honest, with the staff that you have, the team that you have, did you feel that, was there any flaws into this proposal at all, going into this?
The proposal?
Yeah.
No. I follow the government code for professional service, which is actually based on the federal mini Brooks bill. I follow that specifically on every project I do. Now, is the rankings flawed between the different judges? No, because that's why you have more than one judge. They look at different things. It's very subjective of what they look at and how they rank. Did I agree with all the judges? Not on all the rankings, but again, I don't have to agree with them.
All right, let me go flash, because, you know, there's Onyx, our finance director, and Keith Hightower.
Yes.
Do you believe those individuals have qualifications to assess?
Mayor, can I ask where this questioning is going? We're now questioning the integrity of staff.
No, I'm integrating the process, that's what-
Okay, I'm the procurement officer, with all due respect, those directions, questions should be directed at me.
Well, they can be directed at-
I'm the only one in this room that answers to council.
Well, this is questions in regards to the proposal that he wrote. He wrote the proposal-
That council approved.
Yes. But what I want to mention is that the proposal that he introduced first, when it was first introduced and was posted, is different from the proposal that's in the contract currently. It's two different proposals, so if-
Are you talking about the request for proposal that came before council and was approved by council is different than what is in the packet tonight?
Yes, yes, yes.
I would like to know where-
So, if I'm a contractor who wants to come and do work here, and here's the proposal that I'm going to propose, and then the contract itself indicates differently, then I think that's a problem, and then it was changed, then a proper addendum needs to be made and required, am I correct?
I would like to know specifically what was changed.
All right. Am I allowed that time to kind of go over that?
Yeah, because that's a critical issue, so we just needed that word.
So, for example, I'm going to cut through my notes here, because I had a lot of notes. So, in the contract, it talks-
Are we talking about the request for proposal or the contract?
Well, it's both. In October, the contract has one year requirement.
We've already addressed the change in the contract. There was a wrong, there was a previous version of the contract put into the RFP when it came before council. Since then, the city attorney has made changes to the contract, and we have had multiple versions in the last three months. We clarified that at the beginning. The current version of the city attorney's recommended contract will be used with whatever firm or with whomever is awarded.
Way in here. Once the RFP process is concluded, then you'll have to sit down with whoever you decide to go with, or the group of contractors you decide to go with and negotiate the terms of the contract, put the contract in final form. The, when this RFP went out, you had a different approach, and that was, you did these task orders.
Right.
But now, we've moved away from that, we have a purchase order system, so. But again, it's not a sealed bid, it's an RFP, so you have that flexibility to do that.
So, the $2 million that was requested, then it changed to $1 million, that's not a big change in the RFP?
That's not the RFP, that's the contract.
Mm-hmm. So, but the RFP had said $2 million for liability insurance, because what my concern is, is that when I go back to liability, you're putting the liability on the city, we've been through that, that's the mess that we're in, so.
The insurance, the, excuse me, I'm sorry, page four of the RFP, section number 11, does not state a dollar amount in the insurance.
The one in the contract.
Okay, you said the RFP. The contract has changed.
Okay, so the contract has changed.
Correct.
So, but in the RFP that was originally sent out, it stated the amount, what you need for liability insurance. Well, I have it right here. That's what it said in October. So, I know it has been changed multiple times, it was posted. That is just one major concern that I had. There's, I have, I mean, the math was done incorrectly, and I would be happy to share that with the council, that I, what I found. I mean, it's basic third grade math that I discovered.
Are you talking about the math on the B-sheets?
Yeah.
Where it was told here?
It was told incorrectly.
Here?
Mm-hmm. If, one, I can show you one particularly, because if they're, I mean, if they're coming to us with a ranking system, with ranking, and the rankings are incorrect, because the averages have been calculated incorrectly, then I have some concerns. You know, then we have missing, literally, we have missing information that should have been provided to us, because, you know, that's the determination of the ranking system. I'm going based on their ability and their qualification- I'm going based on their, their ability and their qualifications to assess a contractor, and it's not in here, it's missing, but they're being given a score for it, then I have concerns with that. Wouldn't you, wouldn't you have concerns that they said, well, we give this guy a 10, this person 10, excuse me, this person a 10, but there was no, there's nothing to score, there was no score, there was no documentation to show why they got that score?
May I make a quick comment?
Sure.
Hopefully, this will help understand my problem. Who was responsible for totaling up and presenting this spreadsheet?
Carrie Caesar, she's the counterperson, she did it. Onyx, did you verify the numbers?
Well, I'll give you an example that I think Mark is looking for. If you look at DGA, they had three, three, three interviews, or I don't know if this is the interview process, and they had, one was an 86, an 82, and a 68, and you had those three together, comes out to 230. Divide that by...
Show the part. I'm sorry, I just wanted to let her...
It'll be, okay.
It just shows it.
If you divide it by three, it comes out to 76.6 as the average, and the average here is...
Go back.
86, so it's 10 off. So, I think that calls into question, that's why I wanted, my question that I was hoping to ask Chris before we ran out of time is...
You can extend it if we need.
Who is responsible for catching what I just, what Mr. Weiner pointed out?
A customer service coordinator was assigned the task. She happens to be the accounting technician now.
Any council member can request to extend the 30 minutes, and, and the mayor makes that decision. If the council disagrees with it, they can override it, so, because you are, you are past the 30 minutes now.
And my, my deal is if you add that 10, I request that we extend it 15 minutes.
I'll second that. Extend additional 15 minutes, please.
If you, if you take the 10 off a DGA score, it drops it down to...
The last slide.
160.34, which then puts DGA at, in fifth. And, and so my question is, unlike Mark, Mr. Roscoe, I rely on you to make sure that what you're giving, because I don't, I'm not a plan checker, and all I can really go on, what I base a lot of, what I start on is, is what your rankings are, and then I, then I don't, I just assume that you have the addition right, and then I do all my work on the top four or five, I'm assuming that you've, you know, helped me filter out the lower scores, and, and when I look at this and it comes up like this, it calls into question every, all of the addition. Can you respond to that?
Sure, I would understand that, and I actually would have no problem looking at those numbers again to make sure that the input was done correctly, and that the numbers were actually taken off the rating sheets and put in the right slots of the spreadsheet that is right there. And that's a good concern. Could there have been a, a number put in a wrong slot with all these numbers, and therefore they came out different? That's a possibility. That's something that we can look at and verify and bring back to the city council.
But how are we supposed, I mean, we pay a lot of money for our experts, how are we supposed to make a decision based on this kind of bad data?
Again, I would like to take a look at the data, see how the input was done. I'm not gonna call it bad data until I'm able to verify all the scores, and if they were put in the right slots.
I'd move, I'd like to make a motion that we table this to the next council meeting, and get accurate numbers.
Well, I just want a couple more comments, because you made a comment saying...
We can move on, if you just second my motion.
Well, I can, I can, will I be able to ask more, ask more questions?
Do we need more questions?
Well, because if it's gonna come back the second time, I want to make sure I point these out, so then he...
We'll be watching the second time. I'll be watching a lot closer.
Well, I still want to point them out.
Okay.
Okay, so, if you don't mind.
I do mind.
You do mind?
Yeah, because I think we can, I think we can move on.
So, well, you had mentioned that it's not just one, it's a lot of them, a lot of them, I did it on a chart, and I can supply that chart for you, showing you how the math was done, and, you know, how you divided and subtracted and do all that, but a lot of the scores were incorrect.
So, you're gonna go back and do the scores and bring them back?
Mm-hmm.
Is there another item that you wanted to have them look at?
I can, can I, may I supply those to you, because there are a lot, there are a lot of mistakes that I found, flaws that are in...
Whatever you would like to supply for me to look at or possibly clarify, absolutely.
Send an email to Ms. Elizabeth Ortag.
Okay, I will do that, I will do that.
Do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion by White and a second by Mayor Lotte to table the motions at the next meeting, is that correct?
Yes.
Next meeting, okay. Roll call. Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Lotte?
Yes.
Oh, excuse me. Mayor Pro Tim White?
Yes.
Mayor Lotte?
Yes. Mayor, may I ask a question here?
Sure.
Because I do, we're doing, we have...
Is there another item we just checked?
Yeah, this is about the item, the plan check. I understand that we don't have any plan check at this point, I don't know if there anybody's doing plan check.
It's at the end of the...
I think it's in the consent agenda.
Okay.
There's a...
So, by the end of the day, we'll have somebody doing plan check, I just didn't...
It's entirely up to councils.
There's an overlap contract for the time.
Okay, I, I've seen that, I just want to make sure, but that includes that too as well.
Mayor Laura, may I ask something here? In future, because one thing I did for years and years is I, I worked with numbers, and maybe in future, because we're depending on, Chris depended on these numbers, and I'm not faulting anyone, other than a dual control process where, when we have something like this, that someone else verifies.
Absolutely.
And everything that I did, I always did it twice, and then I had someone verify it, because it had to be absolutely accurate, so maybe future we can look at that, because it's easy when you're, you're dealing with a whole bunch of numbers all day long, your eyes are getting tired, so, that's all.
Okay.
Is a quick public comment on that issue?
Yeah, we're gonna go ahead and bring up item, the next item is for F.
Mayor and council, our finance director's going to give the staff report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members, I'm here this evening to present to you staff report for the award of contract for financial advisor services. So, a little history on the process, on November 6, 2015, we issued an RFP for financial advisor services, and on November 6, we received proposals from three different firms. Each of the proposals were attached to your packet. I do want to note that one of the firms later contacted us on December 7, and let us know that they had to disqualify themselves from the process because they had a conflict of interest. I did put and state their reasoning in the staff report as to why they rescinded to be a part of the process. And so then, on December 3, however, before we got that notice, we did review all three proposals, and we scored all three proposals. There were three committee members that were a part of the process, one of which was myself, the city treasurer, and then also, we currently have a accountant that's working for us, who was previously the chief financial officer for the urban corps of San Diego County, who was also a part of the process. We did provide a table for you that averages the scores. We also did interviews with the candidates. At that time, when it was time to do interviews, we knew that one of the firms had disqualified themselves, so we only had interviews with the remaining two firms, and the results of those interviews are also part of the packet, as well as we did reference checks, and we did those by email, and those are also a part of your packet, where you get to see how other cities responded to the references that we had asked, and there were certain questions we asked, and they all responded by email, and so that's part of your packet. So, a lot of information was included, but we wanted to make sure that you had an opportunity not only to see the proposals, but see the feedback from each of the reviewers, and to also see the feedback from the cities that we contacted for reference checks. Just to kind of go over the scope of what we had requested in the packet was a comprehensive type of thing, like we wanted it all, and so we had a list, a part of the RFP, which asked for services for financial planning, to help for our issue with stabilizing our budget, as well as being able to guide us on any bonds that we may need to do, refunding, et cetera. So, it was kind of a hodgepodge of services. All three firms address all of those areas in their proposal, and our feedback is included. So, with that, I'll conclude my presentation and open up for questions. And I do want to also let you know that the representatives from each firm are here this evening.
Mayor, I have a couple of questions for Ms. Jones.
Sure.
Just timing wise, it says on here, November 6, you issued the RFP, and then on November 6, you received the proposals. So, I'm trying to figure out...
Oh, I'm sorry, that, yeah, that was a...
I forgot when the RFP was issued.
No, that was a typo.
Okay.
So, Friday, November 6, is when it gets issued, and then you have 30 days, so December 6 is when the, the proposals are given to us.
That makes, that makes more sense. Did this RFP come to the council for approval?
Yes, it did. Yeah.
Does I, I apologize for not catching it, but I was not, I have a serious issue with the way we put this out to RFP, and, and here's, here are my thoughts. I have, have always said, and I believe it's a, it's a, it's an issue that has gotten us to where we are.
Mm-hmm.
Boy, I hate to keep saying that, but if Urban Futures gets the con, first of all, Urban Futures, I have a lot of respect for. I don't think we would be doing as well as we were without their expertise, I think that they were a great pick and a great fit for the city, but I would not want, if, if Urban Futures is our financial advisor, which I want to keep them there, because they've helped us put together a plan, and going forward, I think they've got more to offer us than any other firm that I've researched on. However, to have our chief financial advisor also writing our bonds, or not, or handling the issuance of our bonds, how is that any different than what Mr. Kapanakis was doing?
Well, I will say that cities typically have a bond team, and they do have an FA, and, you know, the FA does provide not only bond services, but if the city has other needs, they also assist in that capacity, but then you also have other members on your bond team, your bond counsel.
See, here's the problem where I'm going with, is that Urban Future, in my mind, is our financial advisor, and if we hire...
He's the interim, he's the interim financial advisor.
Okay, and until this is approved?
Correct.
Okay, so this will lead to my, my question here. They have provided us, in my opinion, very good advice, and I want to keep them as our financial advisor, but we need somebody, our financial advisor, to be able to come to us and tell us that's not how you should be doing this bond. We don't need our financial advisor coming to us and tell us this is how you're gonna do the bond, because we do both. I mean, that's what Mr. Kapanakis was doing.
Isn't that what the bond counsel would be for, though?
Yeah, you have, you have a whole team of people, but that's what an FA does. Now, and I will let Urban Futures speak to that, because they are here, they have many different entities within the, the firm, the way I understand it, so you have some that specialize in what we have been so far using them for, but then you have, they have a whole other team that we haven't connected with that would assist with bond processing, but then you have bond counsel, which is a separate firm, which is supposed to be the checks and balances.
And I'm not looking for the bond counsel, I'm looking for the financial advisor.
This is, this is very, this is a typical process for a city. It did not go right here, because everyone was in collusion that was on the team, so you have to, in the future, you have to make sure that there's a better review and check and balance, but it is typical that you have a team of people, which includes a bond counsel and an FA. You're, you're separating the two, but that is an FA.
Let me ask you a question.
Uh-huh.
If we decide as a council to give the contract to CSG, CSG doesn't do the financial planning and financial FA work, so we have to send out another RFP for someone to do the FA work, if, if we choose CSG. Is that correct?
Right, they, well, from the feedback that CSG has provided for me, they don't specialize in that area, they specialize in bonds.
And they actually say in their proposal that they will not do that.
Right.
And so, so what I would like to propose, and I don't know, I, I know, I apologize, I asked another council member if they remembered seeing this RFP come through, and that person told me that they didn't remember it either, but, you know, I, I think they're both great firms, I'm okay, I'm good with CSG, but I think this should be two separate contracts. I think we should have a CSG-type company, if it's not CSG, responsible for our bonds, and then we have a company like Urban Futures that's helping us with our five-year plan, and all of the plans and sustainability that we're talking about, that can oversee the CSG. I mean, that was the problem that I think voters wanted, was somebody to oversee the bond issues, and that was an issue that we brought up early on, was that Mr. Kapanakis cannot be both the financial advisor and the, and the bond guy.
And for clarification, Rod Gunn was our financial advisor. Alan was not. Alan was the special tax consultant.
And that's what Webb is for us, so there, there would be separate teams. I will just say this, as far as what you're referring to, there's a working knowledge that has, that exists when you're doing deals. A lot of the discussions that we've had in meetings that the city attorney's been involved with, our bond counsel's been involved with, and our current interim FA has been involved in, they actually give you a lot of information as far as doing a new bond. So, if council elects to split the services, you're now going to be paying, you're gonna be paying both consultants, because they will all need to be a part of all these meetings and discussions, because they all go hand in hand. Additionally, you're gonna have a, I don't know how to work out the, the dynamics of having two firms, where one firm does do bond work and F, you know, and, and it's not F, because financial advisor is all comprehensive, so you have a firm that does all of it, and then you have another firm that does the, you know, just do bond funding. I don't know how the two relationships will work, the two firms could sync, I don't know, that's something that would have to be vetted out through a contract, but additionally, you also have people like Webb and the audit firms, they have to deal with a vendor, whoever it is that's chosen for FA, and so if they're having to deal with two different firms, it could be inconsistent for them, the information could not be the same, so there are some risks if you split it and you have two different firms involved, but definitely, from a financial perspective, there will be an increased cost, because a lot of the discussions and things that we've had, you can't exclude one firm, if you're gonna have two firms, they have to both be at the table, getting the same information, so they can make the, the same decisions. You can't have one and not the other, you've got to have both.
So, we couldn't go through the process that we would hire CSG to do, if, if we picked CSG and Urban Future doesn't get this contract? So, the process that we'd have CSG, they can't do that in, in an island on their own, and then bring it, and then we go to our Urban Futures team, and we say, what's your opinion?
Well, no, what I'm saying is, like, the meetings that are coming about as a result of the discussions of the work Urban Futures is currently doing, the issues that come up that require us to now look at refunding for certain bonds, to look at bonds that were never issued, that should have been issued, all those meetings and conversations, if CSG is going to do the bonds, they now must be at all those meetings.
Oh, I misunderstood, I figured that Urban Future would say, okay, the way you want to look, consider this is...
CSG is not gonna run and rely on information from Urban Futures. When we're having those discussions, they're wanting to hear that information firsthand, so they know how to structure the bond deal. So, it's okay, just know that there will be an expense involved. Now, this particular staff report does not have a dollar sign attached to it, because as projects come up, we will bring those to council with a cost estimate of how much it would cost for each project. So, this is not for a not-to-exceed amount, this is just to say, this is the firm we're gonna use as our FA, and then, when the proposals come up and the issues come up, or we're gonna do a bond, we'll bring that cost estimate to you. So, if you want to select both firms, that we'll have to bring that cost estimate of what it would cost for both firms to be involved with the process.
May I finish my thought?
Mm-hmm.
If I can remember. If we select CSG to take this contract, are you saying that, that we can't have a financial advisor as well?
They will be your financial advisor, if you select them for this contract.
But they won't do any of the things that Urban Futures is doing now.
Well, the, there are things that Urban Future is currently doing will still go on, because they're under contract for those two items. on because they're under contract for those two items, which is the reconciliation and the budget stabilization. So those projects will still continue. And as things come up during those projects that are related to bonds, we're obviously going to have to have CSG involved if you selected CSG.
But didn't the RFP have other issues that CSG doesn't do that we're expecting Urban Futures, if they get the contract, to do for us in the future?
If Urban Futures is selected, they would do all of it. They would do the bonds and then-
Right, what I'm saying is, aren't there, I mean, you started to say that all we're, you know, what they're doing now will continue. What I'm asking, what I'm asking is if in the RFP, you ask for items that are not done yet, that will be in the future, that CSG cannot do if we hire CSG.
Right. So CSG, if you hire them, they will be your financial advisor. And if there's other things that are needed in the future that are, that CSG cannot do, then we're back to doing a RFP process for those things because they would be hired as our FA.
Question?
I had very similar concerns and questions, as Pro Tem Mayor White has suggested. You know, I don't mind paying for a little more transparency. And that's what the people, I think, the people, the citizens of Beaumont have voted us for the direction that we need to go. I don't like to see us dealing with one entity such as a contractor, such as a consultant, such as Urban Futures, with all our financial dealings. I like to see it separate. I did have a conversation in regards to this and I asked about, I think I asked Nacy Carroll in regards, her concerns and her suggestions about this because I had shared them with her and she had mentioned some good things about it. I know for the fact that she also sat on their, part of the judging committee as well, which was a huge asset because she had firsthand knowledge of what the process was and she brought a lot of concerns to my attention. I would like her to share that as well because I think it brings some valid points to the table from our city treasurer. So if I may, because I don't want to steal your thunder here, but if you can share those with the council and staff, I would appreciate that.
We discussed, you and I discussed, you brought up the concern about everything being included in one consulting company. And I did say that, and this is true in all audit process or procedure, you don't put things in place because you expect them to be wrong. You really expect them to be right, but you put them in place for the right reasons. Now, we did have a situation where too much control was under one person and Onyx, that was legitimate when you said that we didn't have enough checks and balances in place. But when you can balance it or make a division sometimes, it keeps from having, you still want the checks and balances, but it does keep the process sort of self-guarding in kind of a natural way that we did not have in place before. And Councilmember White brought up a good point, and that is that the division, and I think Urban Futures is doing a terrific job.
Yeah, they are.
This is certainly no slant, and I think staff is doing a good job. But that division is a healthy division and you and I discussed that point. And I do think that that's a healthy division. I realize that we may save some money by spreading things a certain way, but I think the principle of a healthy division is a good one.
Yeah, even if it costs a little more for the people, for the citizens of Beaumont, that's something that they expect. If I believe, if I remember correctly, I think we all, we read the audit from, when we did it for the city, it suggested about us using one particular firm for a lot of things. And I think the idea of spreading that out is knocking on a hood in terms of that idea. And I really appreciate that idea from you and those ideas that you shared with me. So I want to thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Onyx, what type of money are we looking at here? I understand the healthy division, but I also see the issues. I mean, are we generating a huge headache that we're going to wish we hadn't have done?
Well, I will, I can speak to what, you know, we have spent so far just to try to get things in order. And it's at least $200,000. There was $90,000 for the stabilization plan that's currently being worked on. And then also what we spent upfront just bringing Urban Futures on and just looking at things and getting things done. And then you have the reconciliation, which is totally separate process. So the city has already spent quite a bit. You know, if we go in and we do a bond deal, I will say that many of the fees and things like that are included as part of the bond. However, if there's just administrative meetings, which we've already learned just through having meetings with different developers and from even the community, some of the projects out there, party and et cetera, we have found that there's some things, just meetings and strategies that have to be developed, that time's separate. That's an administrative cost. And, you know, you pay your consultants an hourly rate. So the hourly rates are included in the packet of how much each firm charges by the hour. So for the hours that are needed to proceed, go forward, like I said, it will have to come back to council by each project as far as the costs that are involved. I think what would be good is that you allow the two to speak on this idea because I will say, unlike the plan checks that were previously discussed, splitting this kind of thing up is actually not common. And so the people that proposed may not have had that intent in mind. And so it might be good just to hear from them and get their feedback on the idea. Maybe they're welcome it or open to it, or maybe they have concerns. I don't know because this is something that, unlike the plan check, which may be normal, this is not a usual type of process setup.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I had a question. Onyx, I've been thinking and I don't know, I would like to ask you, because you're no longer hired through an agency, you're a staff member, director of finance, so you can report to staff and council or something. And I've been thinking this and I should have asked this when we were considering your contract, but we never had the chance because it was staff, it was management's decision. Who recommended you to be here, to the city of Beaumont?
Who recommended me?
Yeah. Who, the-
I'm not sure what that has to do with the item we're speaking about right now. So do we focus on this?
Well, it does, it does. It brings the-
You're asking a question about how a person was brought on board.
Well, it does bring into question how much, because she's recommending Urban Futures.
I'm not recommending anything. No. There's no recommendation in here. I've just shared with you the different options. If you go with CSG, this is, you know, the potential effects of it. If you go with Urban Futures, this is the potential effects. I'm not making a recommendation.
Okay. Because it sounds like you're a little selling Urban Futures a little too much.
No, I was, what I was saying is the splitting of the contract, that's not usual and that is a rare circumstance. And so there are certain things that you need to consider if you're going to split it. That's all I was referring to. I'm not advocating one firm or the other. Now, I will say this, and I-
Bring up the firms.
Yeah, so I will say this, number one, even in discussing with the audit firm that we're currently doing our audit with, one of the concerns they said is that, you know, staff is the one that has the expertise. They're the ones that have, you know, the experience in certain areas, whether it's plan checks or whatever. So do I have knowledge in this area? Can I give you feedback? Yes. But I'm not making a recommendation. In regards to the question that you had, you want me to address that question?
Yeah. Let's bring up the vendors. We're running out of-
Okay.
Thank you very much, hon.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Doug Anderson. I'm with Urban Futures. We appreciate the opportunity to present our proposal. We've enjoyed working with the city so far. I think the storyline here is stability. And I think with the amount of time we've spent already learning about the city, learning some of the issues that have gone on in the past, this would certainly improve our ability to provide financial advisor services to you. As you may or may not know, part of the Dodd-Frank legislation and recent SEC legislation has imposed very strict guidelines, guidelines on financial advisors. We have a fiduciary responsibility to the city. That is our first and primary goal. We don't sell bonds. We're not involved in marketing the bonds. Our responsibility is to this group to tell you exactly what you need in our opinion. With that in mind, we've been in business for over 44 years. I've just celebrated my 30th year with this company. We wouldn't have been around that long if we didn't give sound financial advice to our clients. We have at least a dozen clients that have been with us over 25 years. We can certainly do both parts of this assignment without any conflicts and have a fiduciary responsibility to you and provide you the best service since we already know what's going on here. So that's really my pitch on that point. It's not like a public works project where we can have different people doing different pieces. I think you're best served by having us here. We already know the issues. We can provide financial advisor services then on bond issues with the knowledge of what's gone on in the past and what, where the city needs to go to stabilize. I'd be happy to answer any questions to you.
Mayor, I have a quick question.
Sure.
If we chose CSG to give this contract to and understanding their limitations of what work they do do, is that going to affect, one, the existing contracts you have with the city of Beaumont? And would it discourage you from bidding on future financial advisor contracts with the city of Beaumont?
I can't speak to how it would affect the current contract. I'm not involved in the current contract. As far as the fund reconciliation, that's a separate issue and the stabilization report and that type of work. My personal expertise is in bond financing. So that's where I, what I bring to the table. That being said, I think it would be difficult to have both firms doing what you're asking. That's an unusual arrangement.
Okay, that was my only question.
Would that preclude us from bidding in the future? No, certainly we would be happy to.
Okay. That was my only question.
Thank you.
Mark, did you have a question?
No. It was kind of answered already with the question that was put by Councilman White.
Mistake?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was, I heard a night here. Mr. Anderson, just from my perspective, I just really, I hear you and I just, I guess I have a different perspective. I think that it would cause us a lot of problems if we separated right now. I think that we need stability. We need the strict guidelines. We need your expertise, which is, what, 44 years, you said? And you have numerous clients. You know, I want to hear from the other company too, but also are the ratings where they rated you at, out of 150 points, 147.67 for Urban Futures. So, you know, I just see a huge problem with us separating the two. And that's just me. And thank you.
I have a question again. You have a question?
Yeah, just to my colleague here. So Brendan, Councilman Knight?
Yes.
So you're going back, you're relying on the grading itself?
No, I'm not going back on that, that, you, no. It's just, I'm looking at that as a, just looking at it as a guideline, but also from my own work perspective and different things that I've been involved with over the years, I see something here that we're going to generate by separating the two huge problems for our staff. It's going to cost us a whole lot more money. It's going to be a headache that is not, at this point in time, I don't think that they're separate entities, just like Will Dan has, we worked with them, separate entities. I see them as separate entities, but there's, Urban Futures has a lot of history in the last, what? Anybody we bring in is, we're going to have to redo that and it's always, time is money. Time is money.
Urban Logic has a history with us as well.
Urban Futures.
No, no, I'm sorry, but Urban Logic, you're talking about history. Urban Logic-
That's not what we're talking about here, Mr. Roscoe. Mr. Roscoe, you're interrupting me.
Can we stick to the topic at hand, please? And can we get the next?
Well, I had asked Councilman White, I mean, Councilwoman Knight to help to, because she's, her comments is going to help me determine where I want to vote. So her comment suggested something, so I would like her to, you know, help me clarify my thoughts. And when she made that comment, that's why I'm asking her. So it wasn't to be disrespectful, it was just to help me to decide, because that's what we're up here to do, is kind of convince each other, this is best for our city, this is not best for our city. So that's why I had asked her. So I just wanted to clarify. It's not to disrespect, it was just to get an understanding.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment?
Yes.
Thank you. For me, and I'll state this one more time, I see us generating a problem for ourselves that we don't need right now. We need to generate stability. We need to not go out and spend another $200,000 or whatever it's going to cost to do something that we've done RFP after RFP where we can't even keep up with them. And, you know, Urban Futures hasn't been around long enough to have, truly have a history, but they do know our issues and that will be helpful to our, us, our community. And that's basically where I am on the issue.
Okay.
That's all.
Can we hear from CSG?
Good thing, excuse me, hairstyle isn't part of the criteria because then it'd be even more complex. My name is Scott Smith. I'm a principal with CSG. I just want to say a little bit about my background and then get to the questions that were posed. Yeah, I started in CFD financing back in 1994 as a special tax consultant. I was actually the position at Webb Associates that you have now engaged them in. So at that time, the county of Riverside was our main client. Many of their districts were defaulting. And then when I became a financial advisor, soon after that, I worked on major defaults, CFD defaults in Fontana, city of Ione, which was subject to an SEC cease and desist order. And so I came up in this business in sort of crisis management. And I myself, speaking as separate from my firm alone, have worked as a financial advisor on over $800 million of CFD bond transactions. My current Inland Empire clients include Corona, Riverside, Ontario, where we're in the process of bringing online CFD financing for 12,000 new homes in their annexation area. I work with San Bernardino County, Fontana, and school districts in Paris and Menifee. The type of financings I've worked on have included sole office parks with high concentration of taxpayers, master planned communities such as you have in Beaumont, infill developments, so small little tracts such as you have in Beaumont, regional shopping centers. And I've worked on these areas in urban environments and in greenfield environments. I've completed major financings for the cities of San Francisco and Los Angeles. I'm a native of this area. I've lived most of my life in this area, which is not necessarily relevant, but getting to the point is, between my client base and my experience growing up here, I know this area extremely well. To get to the question, I want to also say that I come to this as a very active and engaged advocate for my clients, working in negotiations with developers on new CFDs. I'm familiar with the people at Lennar, SunCal, D.R. Horton, Stan Pack, Lewis, Brookfield, Richland, and other major active Southern California developers. I also see myself as a teacher, where I try to emphasize building staff capacity and understanding where the weaknesses exist in that staff capacity. I see the, to get to the question at hand about are services provided and some of the services that may or- services that may or may not be provided by Urban Futures, I see them as they can be very complimentary. First of all, the forensic work that Urban Futures is contracted to is certainly a very distinct type of work product. And although it is something that I will have to understand in some depth for those active CFDs where there's problems that need to be resolved, I will have to understand those projects and their work product on some level of depth to be able to decide, you know, to help make decisions on ways forward. But for the most part, you know, I see my work, and I'm specifically thinking about CFD financing, you know, some of the work on your general fund and trying to find new sources of revenue for the general fund are separate things from what I do. Where I think the intersection really occurs is where, and this goes to sort of my inherent CFD financing philosophy, which is, the first thing a city needs to understand when they start to engage in a CFD financing program is they really have to understand the fiscal impact of new development on their community. Because the first thing you need to do with CFD financing is make that CFD financing program work for the city first and for the developer second. And what's the important component of that, what's become especially post redevelopment, has become a really essential part of that, is the services component, the ongoing services that weren't otherwise being provided to those new homes that you need to capture from those CFD taxpayers as a first priority before providing that capacity over to the developers. And you really have to understand how to make development pay its own way. And so to the extent that I can be effective for you in, as your advocate, in working with developers to negotiate new CFD bond financing programs, I really need to know that you understand the fiscal impact of that, of that new development. I see my job outside of that role is then working from that place to help be your advocate to develop strong CFD financing policies, strong negotiating positions with new developers as they come in the door. And so, and that work is all paid for by the developers or through proceeds of the bonds. For problems that you have currently that need resolution, whether it's change proceedings on an existing CFD or issues with the bonds that may require restructuring of those bonds, I really can't speak to the cost impact without understanding them on a case-by-case basis. Because CFD financing, although, you know, you would think, you look out at these rows of homes, that, isn't it all the same? It's actually very different on, the circumstances could be very different on a case-by-case basis. And the only way, you know, I could even judge my own cost of services, and the best way to compensate for my time is to communicate with staff and, once I have a sense of what the problem is. And I don't see that necessarily overlapping with some of the fiscal impact, fiscal need, general fund type of stuff that Urban Futures could otherwise provide. And I would answer any questions if you have them.
Great.
One question.
Thank you.
Sir. Do you see your, how do I say, a negative or a handicap for you and your firm to come in, not having the background knowledge of the city? I mean, you see it as a hindrance or as a negative?
Um.
How would you, and if not, explain why. If you think, well, it's all firms, then also explain. By the way, before, I just wanted to mention before you answer that question, I'm sorry. I wanted to state, what, Cosmott, who was one of the candidates here who ended up pulling out, I wanted to share with my council colleagues up here, they did, when I had called them up and I had asked them, why did they had pulled out and stuff, because I was interested. And they had gave me the same indication that was provided by staff. They gave good recommendations. I asked, well, if he had to pick between the two, who would you recommend? And they gave good remarks in terms of your direction, your firm's direction. So I was going to point that out. But going back to the question, do you see that as a problem?
I don't feel it would be a hindrance to the role that I would envision providing to the city. No.
Okay. I have a couple of questions. In Corona, Riverside, Ontario, San Bernardino County, Fontana, do you work with other financial advisors in those towns?
I think that the term "financial advisor" is being used a little bit loosely. You know, there's, as my respected competition here mentioned, you know, there are certain types of roles that a municipal advisor, you know, as that, under that guise, under the new SEC regulations, you know, the area in which we are working where we're providing financial advice as a fiduciary to you, you know, I think of myself strictly in that, in that realm. You know, there is helping with financial planning and fiscal impact analysis and other type of financial consulting in the municipal realm that sometimes may be referred to as financial advisor, but in the, in sort of the strict bond world, it's not a financial advisor per se.
Okay. But I mean, you work, there's other firms in those jurisdictions that provide the kinds of services that are in our RFP that you don't do?
That's right.
Okay.
That's right.
What do you think of 93-1?
I, you know, I don't, I've done nothing to do my own research into your bond financing, so.
Okay. So 93-1 is a citywide CFD that has 27 some improvement areas. And each improvement area has separate bond issues for each improvement area. And my sort of question to you is, 93-1 has got some really bad history that we're dealing with here, issues that are continuing to come up. And so my question to you as a financial advisor, would you recommend that moving forward we look at doing future CFDs separate of 93-1? In other words, let's say a developer comes to us with 500 homes and we do a separate CFD, and not a 93-1, but a separate CFD just for that development? Is that something that you're familiar with in your experience?
I think the, there's, there's an infinite number of ways where cities have planned CFD programs over the years, going back to the early 90s. And the notion was always that, and I don't think I can really directly answer your question, but bear with me. I think there's always been this effort to sort of create this level playing field so that when new development comes on, oh, you're getting the same deal that everybody else got, and nobody can question the fairness or equity of what the city is trying to do. With all, you know, as we all know, in the post Prop 13 world, equity went out the window with Proposition 13. And so one of the difficulties that cities had, have had with trying to create this, you know, we annex in and everybody pays the same rate, or is that things change, costs change, given a particular project's situation, circumstances change where the city decides, well, you know, that program we set up for 93-1, maybe as it relates to the services component, maybe as it relates to the facilities component, it doesn't really work anymore. And it sort of necessitates a change. I don't, you know, the cities are still out there, my own clients are still out there, at least for services components, trying to create that one-size-fits-all approach because services taxes last forever. And when we go in to do a project-specific facility CFD, you always have the ability to add on, add on additional service component if you can prove out the test under the Melrose Act, which is that additional services component is paying for services that would not have otherwise been available had the CFD not existed. So.
You answered my question for me. And I just want to finish with one comment. Mrs. Knight brought up the score that Urban Futures got, and I'm just looking at this one interview and on item A, B, and C of that interview, your firm received half of what you could have gotten, and it's predominantly because you don't offer the, you don't have experience in the other parts of the RFP. And so I just wanted to raise that as a thought, that if the RFP had been more tailored to what their firm just does, then I think the numbers would be a lot closer than they're appearing. But I'm done. Thank you.
Just a quick one.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Smith, right?
Yes.
You're very impressive, and I think you do well at your job. How well do you know Larry Cosmott? Cosmott Company?
I've probably met him socially a couple of times, but I don't, I don't really know.
No, I've known Larry for years, and I was just curious here. And that's all. I just, I think that you're top-notch, but I have to say, I have to stay on my stance with Urban Futures, and I really appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
I just had one final comment. That's fine. I had the same concerns that Councilmember White had brought up in regards to going back to the, having one company do everything. But after listening to comments that were made this evening and looking, going back and looking at Urban Futures items, they point out that part of the problem that got us here was the lack of financial accounting, the lack of internal controls. The State Controller's Office has released their audit indicating that we had, I think, three out of 27 controls in place, which is no longer the issue. I think there's a benefit to having Urban Futures do everything. I think there's an inherent background that they'll have. There's also a cost savings. We are still, have a growing concern regarding our cash insolvency. There's still that concern there. So I do think we need to make good choices. I think CSG has great experience in the CFDs, but I think we need a more global approach to this at this time. And that's my comment. Do you want to make a motion?
I would. First, start off by saying, I ran on the idea that we needed an oversight of our CFD process. So I'd like to move that we award the contract to CSG.
I'll second that motion.
Would you like us to bring, if it passes, the motion, the contract back for final approval once it's finalized, because this is just a formal contract?
Would you amend that motion?
Would you like, just for direction, we can bring it back if that's what you want us to do?
You don't need to bring it back for me. I don't know if anyone else wants to add that. Amend the motion? So no, I don't need you bring it back to us.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by White, second by Orozco, to award the contract to CSG. Roll call. Councilmember Orozco?
Aye.
Councilmember Knight?
No.
Mayor Pro Tim White?
Yes.
Mayor Latta?
No.
Does not pass.
Okay, I would like to make a motion then, that I, that we award the contract to Urban Futures.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Knight, second by Latta, to award the contract to Urban Futures. Roll call. Councilmember Orozco?
No.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim White?
No.
Mayor Latta?
Yes.
Does not pass.
So now what do we do?
Well, the motion, both motions failed, so neither contract was awarded.
I would like to make another motion, that you bring back to us an RFP for the bond issuance separately, and that's it. And then both firms can bid on that RFP, and then we'll be able to determine, it'll be a safer, I mean, a more balanced scoring, so.
A lot more cleaner.
My motion is to bring back an RFP just for the bond, just for the bond work and not all of the other things that Urban Futures is doing for us.
I'll second that motion. Can I ask a question before we go? Doing that, where do we end up on our financial side of it? I understand that you want to split it, but we're not bringing the financial side of it.
Right. My understanding, and Mr. Pinky, you can correct me, the way I understood from Mrs. Jones as well as the two candidates, is that we already are under contract on the work that Urban Futures is already doing. And my idea going forward is if we need services that, if the new candidate on the new proposal, and we may receive other candidates who didn't want to bid because they don't do all the other stuff, but if we have other stuff that needs to be done, then we RFP that out. And we can RFP it out as an overall financial, Urban Futures, what they're doing for us now.
Does it cover the budget and the finance?
I apologize, my binder is without this item. Can I go over here? I had the page from the RFP that was approved, by the way, it was approved October 6th by council. It was pulled off the consent count.
Oh, okay. I apologize for not having those thoughts then.
So Exhibit A of the bid is the scope of work. And I don't believe specifically Item Number 3 is covered right now. Onyx, correct me if I'm wrong.
What page?
I'm on Page 5 of the RFP.
Yeah.
And which item? I'm sorry.
Number 3 is not covered by a contract currently.
No.
Number 5? Number 6?
Correct.
We have an interim, or we have, we're using Urban Futures right now as an interim?
They're, per the initial interim that was set up, I believe it was only for six months.
Okay. So that would be ending as well.
Mr. Pinky, could we ask for two RFPs to come back splitting this up, and Urban Futures could still bid on both and win both?
Sure. Absolutely.
Okay. I guess that would be my motion.
And given the vote tonight on the two contracts that were presented to you, that seems like probably the next step, so we can certainly do that.
Yeah, that's why I think the issue is.
Plus, the next time around, we probably won't have a two-two, we won't have a four-person council.
So for clarification, I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim White, to bring back an RFP for bond issuances only in a second.
Yeah, let me amend that motion. I move that we bring, staff brings back two RFPs, one for the bond work. I think you understand which bond work I'm talking about, and one for everything else. And then we resubmit those out to bid.
Separating now the work. Do you want me to go ahead and second that? Because I did, I seconded his original motion. Now I would go ahead and pull my, pull it from the first one, and I will second for the amended motion.
Do we need a timeframe for the RFP to be brought back?
It'll be the first meeting in February.
Just the first.
Can I have a point of clarification? Because the contract currently has ended with the FA, I believe it was six months, the current interim.
I don't know when the expiration was.
Okay. So...
We'll have to bring back a...
An extension if...
An extension, okay. All right.
Thank you.
All right, let's take roll call. Councilmember Orozco?
Aye.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem White?
Yes.
Mayor Lada?
Aye.
Mayor, I'd like to request that council authorize me to extend that purchase order without bringing it back to council, because we do...we're in the middle of heavy work.
Is it within our ordinance...I'm sorry, Mayor.
Is it within our purview?
Well...
The city manager can enter into contracts up to $10,000. I think the concern of the city manager is the gap between now and the time...
Yeah, I agree.
...this is done.
Okay, I agree.
And, okay, so the city manager is just looking for a direction that you're comfortable with that.
Because it's going to take several months to get this done.
You have consensus.
Yes.
Thank you.
But you will bring back an extension for us, that we don't have to keep doing this every $10,000.
That's fine.
Okay.
Do I have the RFP by that right? Public comment on that? Do we have public comment on that?
No, no.
Okay.
I got one. I kind of find it...
Excuse me. The slips are in the back. If you would do that for us and fill those out when public comment's available, I'd appreciate that very much, running late. So it'd be Item 4G, amendment of the Chapter 9.02, the Beaumont Municipal Code for Noise Control.
Chief will be presenting that stuff.
Excellent job, man.
Evening, once again, Mayor, Council. Staff's proposing we make some changes to our current noise ordinance. What we'd like to see in there is something that's more quantifiable, identifiable. It used to be basically a...it was a judgment call. It was more subjective than objective. And so we want to put some times in there, the decibels. The police department's going to request at the end, purchase two decimal readers that we'll have in different vehicles, so we can actually measure the decimal readers and then make a decision based on that. This really came about when there was some complaints over in the industrial area with Risco Steel. And we were sending night shift watch commanders out there, and, you know, they can't make that kind of a call without something to help them out with. And so this code's going to do that. I would like to point out also, a couple housekeeping items on this, and they both are under 9.02110. The first has identified two section Fs. And so that was an oversight, and we're going to fix that, so the first F will remain, then G, H, and we'll get those in line. The second one is, under F, the first correct F, we'd like to have a...we're proposing some amendment to that, which would, in the summer months, actually give the, probably the construction crews, an extra hour, since there's more daylight, to get the work done. And so that language would read something to the effect of, "Whenever a construction site is within one quarter of a mile of an occupied residence or residences, no construction activity shall be undertaken between the hours of 6:00 PM and 6:00 AM during the months of June through September; in between the hours of 6:00 PM and 7:00 AM during the months of October through May, exceptions to these standards shall be allowed only with the written consent of the building official." So we're asking that with those changes, that you would approve the first reading. And I'm available for questions.
No, sounds like a good idea.
Real quick, why the difference in the months?
I think through summer months, you do have some extended hours that they can work. There's less going on in those months with the schools out of session. It just extends the work time.
Councilmember Orozco, you have a question? Yeah, so I like...you indicated, or did I miss that? So this kind of went through planning already, and...
Yes, I worked with the planning department and legal on it.
I'm sorry?
I worked with both the planning department and our city attorneys.
Okay, okay. And we don't see any legal ramifications in terms of businesses around there, or other landowners that are currently there occupying?
You mean in terms of imposing a noise ordinance?
Yeah, yeah.
They have an opportunity to come tonight and speak during public comment if they're opposed to it, but none that I'm aware of.
Okay. That's why I was just checking. I don't want to be liable and have to get a lawsuit down the road, you know? Thank you. Thank you, Chief, very much. Appreciate that. And thanks for getting on that, based on the complaints from our constituents. I appreciate that. It's one way we can address that concern there.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Do we have public comment?
No, would you like to open or close?
We need a public hearing.
Oh, sorry. Close the public hearing?
I don't think it was open, was it?
You got to open it.
We haven't opened a public hearing.
Okay.
So we need...yeah.
Okay. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing for Item 4G.
At 10:39.
At 10:39, thank you. I'll...yeah, he'll get me some trained up, good.
Here. I move to approve the first reading of the ordinance, and amending Chapter 9.02 of the Beaumont Municipal Code.
We have to do the...
Noise control. I thought you were already done.
No, I just opened it.
Oh, I thought you closed it, too. No, it's too late. It was...oh, I thought you...
No, there's no speakers.
No speakers.
Let's close it.
So we'll close the public hearing? Thank you.
I retract that.
I appreciate it.
And I'll ditto it. Okay?
I'll second that.
Second by...
White. Mayor Pro Tem White.
Okay, so we have motion by Knight, second by White, for the approval of the first Roll call. Councilmember Orozco?
Aye.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem White?
Yes.
Mayor Lada?
Yes.
Okay, that brings us to Item 4H, landscaping standards.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Staff has completed a comprehensive update of Title 17, Chapter 17.06, landscape standards, in order to establish landscape standards for all zones and to update our water efficiency landscape requirements. The update is required to comply with the latest state requirements that went into effect on December 1st. Due to the fact that this ordinance will be codified after that December 1st deadline, staff is currently enforcing the state model ordinance for water efficiency until such time that this ordinance goes into effect. The update is a complete rewrite of the entire chapter. The current code does not address or cover landscape standards for each zone, parking lot landscaping, or slope requirements. This update will codify the policies that staff have to enforce to ensure sufficient landscaping is installed while meeting the water efficiency requirements. Although there are many changes to the chapter, the most noticeable will be the change to the requirement to single-family homes, front yard landscaping. The current code requires an 85% front yard coverage to be planted with living material, either grass, shrubs, or ground cover. Last year, the staff brought a policy to council to allow for a decreased coverage in the front yard while staff worked on this update. The new requirements, restrictions include allowing no more than 50% of the front yard and street side yard to be non-pervious surface, such as a driveway. The remaining unpaid portion, excuse me, shall be landscaped and irrigated and maintained with at least one-third plant material. The plant material may be substituted for artificial grass. The remaining area shall be covered with wood chips, decorative rock, or decomposed granite. Additionally, this code also requires a minimum of two trees to be planted in the front yard. The planning commission did review this proposed ordinance on November 10th and recommends approval as proposed. I can answer any questions you might have.
Mayor, I have a quick question.
Councilmember White?
So go back over the part, at least one-third plant material. So my...I guess my question is, they have to have at least one-third plant material, but they could have it all plant material. They don't have to go with wood chips, or rock, or...
That is correct. It is a minimum.
Okay. And does this apply to existing homes, or just development?
No, most of the requirements required to new or remodel, depending on the square footage. The water efficiency landscaping does go to existing homes if they are re-landscaping, I believe, more than 200 square feet of landscape area, then it would apply.
Okay.
But for the most part, in practicality, it'll just be the new homes as they install.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the...
We do need to hold a public hearing.
We do, you're right. Yes. Yes, yes, yes. Yes, I am. Just keeping you in your toes, buddy.
I'll just go ahead and open the public hearing at 10:44. Do we have any...
No speakers, Mayor.
We have seen no speakers. I will...
You have one speaker.
One speaker. Thank you. Speaker Victor Dominguez?
The only question or concern I would have is, what impact would that have on the senior citizens that have pre-existing homes? Are they going to be able to have some type of...I mean, I don't want them to be penalized if they have to redo their landscaping, and if they cannot afford to do it toward the standards that we just adopted, is there exemption for them? And again, keep in mind of senior citizens or the working poor. That's all.
Thank you for your comment. I thought this didn't apply to existing homes, unless they're doing 200 square feet or more re...
That's my understanding.
It does not apply to existing homes unless they are making a change. If they are making a change, they would have to comply with the current ordinance.
Okay.
Do we have any other speakers?
No, Mayor.
I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at 10:45. Make my motion? Sure. To...to...sorry, approve the first reading of the ordinance, amending Chapter 17.06 of the Beaumont Municipal Code, landscape standards.
Go ahead.
It's your turn.
I'll second it.
Motion by Orozco, second by White, to approve the first reading of the municipal code. Roll call. Councilmember Orozco?
Aye.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem White?
Yes.
Mayor Lada?
Aye.
Next item up would be Item 4I.
Mayor and council, as part of the public safety area of our organization, I've asked Chief DeLeese to give the staff report on this item.
Evening, Mayor, council. So currently, we're in closing out our first quarter of our current contract with Cal Fire moving into our...we should be built shortly for our second quarter. The state did approve, or there was a federal minimum wage increase. What that did was create some compaction within Cal State seasonal firefighters and their full-time firefighters. Because of that led...it's leading to negotiations between their fire union and their...and the state. Depending on how those negotiations go, or when they close, it may have the impact of having rate increases. Fire executive staff has estimated the worst-case scenario, an 8% increase in our current budget, and that would be passed down to all the cities. We budgeted for that already. So the current budget that's been approved by city council is already budgeted for that worst-case scenario. The good news is, is that negotiations haven't begun officially yet. We don't think they would close that soon. And typically, in our fourth quarters, when we see any type of budget adjustment, and what we've seen over the last few years, is that the states actually return money back to the city. So that's when they build the highest rate throughout the year, and then at the end, they say, "Well, you didn't use it," or "These guys didn't make that much," and so it's returned to the city. And that's when we usually see it, is in the fourth quarter. But this is a worst-case scenario, the 2.429 million dollar figure.
I have a question. Maybe it was just a number input here. It says the impact...let me go back to the page, Page Seven. It says the estimate includes 8% increase, placing the potential cost of the agreement at $2,429,892. And then on the fiscal impact, the anticipated fiscal impact is $2,167,000, and change.
So that's the current contract, is for the $2,167,000. That is the contract, but we are saying that there could be an 8% increase to that. Like I said, we budgeted for the two, up to 2.5 million. And so that's what we'd asked that the purchase order be, but we may never realize that increase.
No, I understand, but it says the anticipated. So which one is the anticipated?
Is the difference the 8%?
It is.
Okay. So wouldn't it be the fact that estimate includes that? Wouldn't it be that number instead of the other number?
Well, I'm anticipating the 2.167, but we budgeted for the worst-case scenario. We currently, talking with the fire department, still anticipate that the negotiations, they may not materialize in time to affect this contract, but it may. I'm just here to tell you that this is what we have to look for, but we were aware of this when we built this budget and we planned for it. So I wanted to give you both. I want to give you a worst case, so we're just open about that.
Okay.
This is what we think is going to still happen, is the 2.1 figure.
I don't think it's going to change, huh?
Well, we hope not.
Okay. Well, you're optimistic. That's why I was asking, I wasn't sure. I mean, you know...
It is something that, as City Manager said, my...one of my responsibilities is the fiscal impact of our fire contract. Obviously, it affects the city and the police department greatly, and I do follow our fire chief often about it, and then I report directly to the City Manager on it. And she's involved as well, but it's something I ask a lot about.
Okay. Do we have a question? Let me go ahead and open the hearing. Okay. Thank you very much, Chief. Do we have any requests to speak?
4H, no, Mayor.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at 10:50. And...
No speakers, no.
So I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at 10:51. Do we have a motion?
I move we approve the purchase order.
I'll second that motion. You have a motion by White, second by Orozco, to approve the purchase order. Roll call. Councilmember Orozco?
Aye.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem White?
Yes.
Mayor Lada?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself on the next item, since it involves my...
Take a break. Want to take a now, or... I'm going to go ahead and take a short break.
Turn there.
I know. Life is today.
Life is today.
Life is today.
Bring the meeting back to order at 11 o'clock. Next item up is 4J, for attorney services.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 4J is the monthly billing from our city attorney, Sloback, Fair and Empy, Murphy and Pinky. Because we didn't have a meeting December 15th, I authorized the payment on these invoices, so this is a ratification. If for some reason you disagree with the invoice, a particular invoice, we can certainly credit that in January's invoices.
Credit, huh?
I did not want to hold up the city attorney's $71,257.27.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
I move to ratify.
I'll second that.
I have no speakers, but did you want to open and close?
Go ahead and open public comment at 11:02 and close at 11:03. So we have a motion and a second.
Motion by Knight.
By Knight. Second by...
Mayor Protem White.
Okay, so a motion by Knight, second by Mayor Protem White to approve ratification of the invoices. Roll call, Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Mayor Protem White?
Yes.
Mayor Lada?
Aye.
Brings us to item number five on the agenda, City Manager Report.
Mayor and council, we've already heard and gave staff report on 5A2 and 5A3. 5A4 is just the monthly reporting of permit information. 5B1 is our community outlook, so the only thing I have left is to give you currently what we're working on for the January 19th meeting. Argent, the builder in Fairway, will be coming in to do a very brief presentation on one of their parks that is set to be built. They are working currently with staff on finalizing the different areas of what we would like to see in there. Building and safety plan check, RFP selection, on-call environmental services, RFP selection, contractor professional services recruitment, Public Works Director job description and budget adjustment. I will be bringing that job description back to you. We have yet to receive one application, so we need to revisit and change the job description. Wastewater Treatment Plant Engineer, RFP, that has been a long process that I apologize for not having completed yet, but it will be done. The Date Festival Queen is a Beaumont resident and a member of our Queen and Court, and the Date Festival Association or organization has asked that the Date Festival come to the next council meeting to give a short presentation, being that she is a hometown girl.
All right.
Third-party administrator, RFP, a water master invoice that we've been presented with, that's a significant dollar amount over my signing limit. A few transit items having to do with grants, small business program, real estate incentive agreement, grant deed sewer lift station, and of course, the city council appointment and the extension of the interim financial advisor services. And with that being that that is a lengthy agenda, and we've added the city council appointment to that agenda, I would recommend that we schedule a special meeting at some point next week to divide that agenda up, since the city council appointment, I'm gathering, may take a significant amount of time.
What's the, I'm sorry, Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes.
What's the third-party administrator? What's that?
The third-party administrator is our claims adjuster. We currently don't have one.
Okay.
And we're fumbling with different staff members doing it right now, and it's not productive.
Okay. Question?
Any additional question?
No.
Mr. Councilmember Roscoe?
You mentioned that there the RFP for the RFQ, for the recruiter, right?
Yes.
Okay, so that will be on the next agenda.
Yes. The bids were received December 18th. We have five application, or responses.
For the recruiter, so.
And we will be bringing that to you. However, in this case, I will not be doing any scoring. This is entirely city council's contract. That contractor would report directly to city council and not the city manager, because it is the recruitment for the city, the...
City manager.
City manager.
So we'll do it here, live?
All I'm going to do is present them...
6 o'clock?
Yeah.
Okay. It's going to take some time also.
I'm good with a special meeting next week. I can't do Wednesday night, but I...
Oh, I was going to suggest Wednesday.
Oh.
Sorry.
I can skip it.
We have planning commission in this room on Tuesday, so it would have to be Monday.
Or Thursday.
Or Thursday. Right.
You do it Wednesday, we'll still have a quorum, right?
I will be here, but I would like to not do it.
Well, let's see, are...
I can do a quorum check if you want to.
Says, is that next week or the week after?
I'm recommending next week to divide this agenda in half to give council more time to focus on city council appointment.
Sure, get my calendar.
So Monday, the eleventh, sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Monday, the 11th, looks good.
Monday, the 11th?
Or Thursday, the 14th.
Or Thursday, the 14th.
How about you, Mr. Pinky?
We'll, if I'm not here, we'll, Ms. Wade will be here, we'll have the meeting covered. So whatever works for you, we'll make it work.
Yeah. I can do, I can move stuff around, 11 to 14th.
11th is okay.
11 and 14th is either way.
Either one? Is the one better than the other, or?
No, it's just, well, it's complicated. But I can...
You want to shoot for the Monday, the 11th?
Yes.
Let's go ahead and set it up for Monday, the 11th.
We are, what would be having a closed session?
I don't have any items for closed session right now, today, but that could change.
If we don't, then can we start it at 5? Start the open session at 5?
I would like that.
Yeah, I'm good.
You good with that, Mark?
I'm sorry?
5 o'clock? Are you good with that?
Open session?
Yeah. Start, starting the meeting at 5.
Yeah, I can, hopefully it's not raining.
Okay. So we're looking at the 11th at 5 o'clock.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, let's go for it, if that's okay.
Next up, we have City Clerk Report. Sorry, were you?
I'm done.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor and council, one of the outstanding issues we have at the clerk's office, I did meet with Mrs. Judith Bingham in December to review a letter from her attorney that outlined 11 requests she believes to be outstanding. In order to accurately respond, though, the clerk's office has been in contact with the interim city manager and the city attorney to review each request so that we can accurately respond. As we're looking at each request, we're looking at it in three different ways. One, does the city believe a response was issued? Number two, if not, where is the city currently in fulfilling that request? And number three, to develop a timeframe for completing the request. I believe we can have a response to that letter probably by Monday. Doesn't mean that the requests themselves are fulfilled, but it does believe a response to the, to the letter will be addressed. So that's, that's one of our major issues we're dealing with. We are in process of hiring a deputy clerk full-time. As you know, the clerk's office is just overwhelmed at the moment, so we're doing the best we can with what we have. So hopefully, when we have a salary, full-time employee, we can, we can do a little bit more.
And I have the draft of the conditional offer of employment on my desk. It will be issued tomorrow, and at this point, until that conditional offer is signed, I'd rather not reveal the person's name.
For the, for what position?
Deputy City Clerk.
Okay. What about Public Works? Have we filled that yet?
Public Works Director, no. That's one of the items that I discussed in my report.
Okay.
And we do have a speaker on this item.
Okay, I'll go ahead and open up a public comment at 11:11.
Judith Bingham?
Judith Bingham, 115 Minnesota. Mayor Lara and council members, I'm very unhappy. You should have hired somebody a long time ago. It's not a part-time job, and that's not the way you run a city.
Thank you for your comments.
And that's all I have. That's it. Thank you.
I'll go ahead and close the public comment at 11:12.
And that's all, Mayor. Thank you very much. There was City Attorney. Briefly, I'll just report on some of the items that we've been working on since my last report, or over the last 30 some odd days. We've been advising the city in connection with day-to-day labor employment issues, as well as assisting the city in connection with collective bargaining, assisting the city with code enforcement matters as requested, advising the city in connection with the Heartland Project, working with Mr. Forbath and Stradling Yoka on some of the financing issues that they've been assisting the city on. And then advising the city in connection with the RDA dissolution, obtaining and finding a completion from the Department of Finance, and also represented the city at a pitch, in connection with the pitch's motion, provided AB 1234 training last month in December, advised the city, or looked at the city's utility user tax from a legal perspective, and to make sure that it's compliant with the applicable laws, in which we've completed that analysis. Also, the city clerk received an amended growth ordinance. You recall that there was a growth ordinance that was submitted by some of the residents of the community, and we were obligated under the code to prepare what's called a title and a summary, and then they received an amended ordinance, proposed ordinance initiative. And so we prepared a title and summary in connection with that amended proposed initiative. Also, in anticipation of the, the council had indicated that it wanted to have a meeting in the first quarter of this year where it discussed the idea of a council-initiated growth limitation ordinance, and we were asked to look at that issue and then also... And so we've done that analysis, and we've prepared a memo addressing those issues. Also, we've advised the city in connection, recently in connection with the changing medical marijuana laws in the state of California. We've also, we attended, I attended a joint meeting between the city council, the Beaumont Cherry Valley Water District and the Kappa Valley Water District. Advised the city in connection with filling a council vacancy that occurred. Also drafted, we've drafted, and I haven't gone over this with the city manager yet, but we've gone through the financial portion of the code that deals with purchasing policies and sale of city real and personal property, and we've revised those code sections, updated those code sections. So at some point in the future, it's not urgent, but that'll be coming to you. We also prepared the contract for the IT services that were awarded by the council. We have, as we mentioned earlier this evening, or as I mentioned, we've prepared and provided the city with a form professional services contract, but that's just a form, and it has to be tailored to the unique situation that, you know, whether you're dealing with a financial advisor or an IT company, you obviously have to take that form and then modify it to reflect the actual circumstances you're dealing with. We've also been advising the city in connection with the Kirkwood Project, and then advising the city regarding land use and planning issues, as those have come up, including a CUP application for a cell tower, and then advising the city in connection with finalizing, there were some sort of housekeeping calendared items in connection with the Riverwatch settlement agreement that was entered into that we assisted with. And then we've also been advising the city in connection with pending litigation, and as I've indicated in the past, we would come back to you, even though we don't list all pending litigation on the agenda, we periodically report back to you on what cases the city has pending also for the public's benefit, so they know what cases the city has pending. And so that list is as follows. There is an appeal between the, there's actually two appeals between the City of Beaumont and WRCOG. One is of the underlying adjudgment, and the other is the attorney fee award, and both of those appeals are pending. There's also the lawsuit that was filed by the City of Beaumont against Riverside County Transportation Commission and WRCOG, and that action was stayed because of the WRCOG lawsuit that was pending in Orange County. And so that case, although there's currently not any activity, that case is currently pending. There's also the Oak Tree Alternative Care versus City of Beaumont matter, and that case is on appeal, and it is fully briefed, so there's really not any other activity going on in that case. At some point in the near future, we'll, we'll be notified of a, of a oral argument date. And then also Morgan versus the City of Beaumont as a wrongful death case, and that case is on appeal and has been fully briefed. And then there's Pedrosa versus the City of Riverside and the City of Beaumont, and that case is pending, and it's at the pre-trial stage. And then there are three cases involving a gentleman by the name of Hopp that the city is a party to, and those cases are all pending. And then there is a Bank of America versus, the city is named in a case by Bank of America. It's a judicial foreclosure action where the bank is foreclosing on a property. We happen to have a lien of $100 or so, and so the city was named, but there won't be any activity really by the city in connection with that. And then Hernandez versus the City of Beaumont, and that was a lawsuit that was filed against a manufacturer of JPX tear gas device, and that case is still pending. And so that's all the litigation that we're currently pending.
Thank you.
That's my report.
Mayor, I have a quick question.
Yes.
We had decided early on when you came on that we would no longer list that list you just made on, on the closed session, and we'd only list the, the ones that we're actually actively discussing or may be discussing closed session. And I wanted to make a suggestion that the list that you just went through, that that be a backup documentation to the one time a month when you do your report.
Okay.
Just so that, because you may not have to go over it all, number one, but also I think it'd be nice to sort of keep a list of what you've got.
You know, rather than, one approach that we could take is rather than list, include that list in the agenda, as had been done in the past, we could just, under the city attorney report in the packet.
That's what I'm saying.
At each meeting, just have that list. We'll do that.
Okay. Thank you.
I've asked for a public records request, and I never get it.
It's.
It'll be in the next meeting that you do the.
Sure. I have the list right here, so.
We actually have this, we actually have the response drafted. We just.
Okay.
Did it today at 5 o'clock.
To Ms. Bingham?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Did it get drafted, Julio?
We, we sent.
She did not.
Just so you know, we sent that.
But she's gonna.
Ms. Bingham's requested a list of all the pending cases, and we sent that over to Julio today, so.
Okay. Thank you. Brings us to the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor.
Or do we have, I'm sorry.
Speakers?
Yes.
Do we have speakers?
Yes, we have speakers.
Go ahead and open public comment at 11:20.
First speaker is John Swain.
He's gone.
He's gone. Second speaker, Karen McKernan.
Which item?
This is eight, HOP. Would you like to take them all at once, or do you want?
Oh, we're still on.
We're still on seven.
We're still on seven.
Attorney report, item seven.
Oh, we're still on seven. I apologize.
It's okay.
Trying to speed it, just trying.
It's late.
So there's, no, there's no speakers on seven.
Okay. I'll go ahead and close the public comment at 11:21.
Sorry.
It's all right. And that brings us to item number eight, consent calendar.
So that we do have three speakers, two speakers now on that.
Before we get to that, I'd like to pull an item, 8H, but I understand we do have a speaker on that, but I would like to pull that and remove that from the agenda. We have since made other arrangements. We will not need a PO for $16,000.
Mr. Mayor, I need to pull.
Yes, ma'am.
I need to pull item 8E for correction on the minutes.
8E as in Edward?
Yes. E as in Edward.
For correction, so we're pulling that. And we're removing item G, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Item G or H?
I'm sorry, H.
H, my mistake. I'm trying. Do we need to pull any other items?
I do have a member of the public that wanted to pull 8O and 8P.
O and P?
Yes.
And I would like to pull item 8K.
Can you speak on it?
Um, discussion.
Okay, okay.
Any other items?
Can I make a motion to pass the remaining?
You may.
And we have a, we do have a speaker on 8L.
8L.
Yeah, let's hear all the speakers first.
Okay, well, I can pull L.
You wanna pull L?
I move that we approve items 8A, B, C, D, F, G, I, J, M, and N. A, B, C, D, F, G, I, J, M, and N.
Good job.
I second that.
Okay, so we have a motion by White and a second by Knight to pull the mentioned items. We'll take roll call. Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Councilmember Knight?
Oh, yes.
Mayor Pro Tem White?
Yes.
And Mayor Lada?
Aye.
So go ahead and open up public comment at 11:24.
Let's go ahead and go with the eight, well, Dr. Ball Blair.
We need to make our adjustment too, right? Brenda?
Yes. It's just a quickie.
Okay.
Mayor, council, I've wondered if the council understands what is happening on this, and I, maybe I'm in the dark on this, but a couple, about a month ago, I believe, the.
Excuse me, Dr. Ball, which item are you talking?
8L.
8L. Okay, thanks.
The fee study. A month or so ago, you each attended, most of you attended, the elected officials with Beaumont Cherry Valley Water District, U Kappa Valley Water District, so forth, concerning what you might want to do in the future, and you have somewhat of a time constraint there over the next several months to make a decision. It seems to me that your staff is asking you go out for a fee study on what you might be looking to build and put that onto the developers, and yet you don't know what you're going to do, and so going out for an RFP on something you're not aware of, it seems to be a waste of time and money to many individuals. So, yeah, it would, seems to me that you would want to make a decision on which way you're gonna go, on your own or with cooperation with others. At least, that's the way I read it, and perhaps it's different. I commend you for trying to keep up with all these acronyms and so forth. I think if I went out and asked the general public what a federal OMBA-87 is, you would get a glazed look, just like I get a glazed look when I read those things, because you have to have a whole new vocabulary here, and I understand your financial matters are complex. As I read this, one of the sentences says, "To that end, the city is seeking to engage the services of a qualified professional firm experienced in cost recovery." Well, when I first read that, I said, "Yeehaw, you're gonna try to recover all the money that has been taken from the enterprise wastewater fund and given to the general fund," as your finance advisors just told us last month, but I'm sure that's not what that means. I think that's meaning that they want to recover the funds of whatever your projects are going to be through developer fees. So, you know, in order for you to have a good report from these people, you're gonna have to, in my mind, show them that the money you have collected for zero liquid discharge desalter, that is not viable on a municipal basis, you've been collecting those fees, you would want to show the consultants where those monies are. They're lost, they're gone, and so that they have a better idea of how much money you're gonna have to have going on forward on whatever projects you've decided to build, and yet you haven't decided as a council what you're going to build. So I think it would be something that's, needs to be talked with staff, maybe they didn't go to that meeting with you, and understand what exactly is going on with this particular item. 8L, thank you.
Mayor, may I respond?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause the way I, the way I read it, so maybe I can save a little time, and the reason, I agree, when I first saw it, Dr. Ball, those were my concerns right away. But, but I understand that, first of all, we are evaluating the sewer fund, and that's part of the process we're working with now.
Correct.
But we, as a council, have decided to evaluate our options with the, with the regional water, and one of the, one of the functions of that is to know what, you know, what kind of, we need to understand what the fees are gonna be going forward if we choose not to do the regional water. That has to be, in my opinion, in part of the analysis before we come to the water districts and say we're in. We need to evaluate what our revenue from the fees would be, along with the cost of everything else that we're considering for the regional water. So that's why I didn't have a problem with this once I started to think it through that way. Am I misinterpreting?
No, no, you're absolutely correct.
Okay.
And there's a multitude of user fees that we need to look at and revisit.
What are the general fund user fees?
The passport, yard sales, just any fee that we charge. It's a comprehensive.
Okay.
Councilmember Roscoe?
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to comment on as well. My understanding was, we had agreed that, that we wanted to kind of see the whole picture and our options, and I think for once, I know Dr. Ball, Blair Ball has mentioned several times, when that staff should, should come to us with that huge picture, what we spent and what our fees are gonna look like. So, I think this is kind of what you've been asking us to do, and I think that's what we're doing here, before we make any decision going left to right, straight ahead, backwards, whatever. I think this is a good step forward, so.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
I move that we pass item 8L.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion by White, second by Roscoe to approve 8L. Roll call. Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem White?
Yes.
Mayor Lada?
Aye.
Hey. Councilmember Knight, did you wanna make your?
Yeah, this is just a real quick, it's item number 8E. There's, needs a correction on council reports, and it reads, Mayor Knight said she and Mayor Franklin had a disagreement. Actually, it was an agreement.
I, I know, and we, we actually went back and listened to the tape, and I, I do believe you said disagreement, but the intent and the intonation.
All right.
So, we typed.
We're good then.
But if the intent was agreement.
Yes, Debbie and I had an agreement, not a disagreement. Okay? So I misspoke.
Okay.
So.
So, I move to. Motion to make that change?
Yes. I move to make that change on item number 8E to agreement.
I'll second.
Can we make a motion to approve it with that change? So we don't have to bring it back?
I would like that.
Yeah, okay.
I'll withdraw my.
To approve it.
Okay. So the motion will reach to approve AE with the correction.
Yes.
I agree.
And who was the first and second? I'm sorry.
I moved it, and.
I'll say.
Yeah.
I'll say. Your roll call. Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem White?
Yes.
Mayor Lada?
Aye.
I think that brings us to item K, if I'm correct.
Thank you.
Chief, I just had a, a quick question on this.
On the, this fee that we get, part of that, it funded a position who, that person's no longer with us. I like the idea of what you're proposing. Question is, is just the position is, do you need it? Are you gonna be able to fill that or accomplish those duties in another fashion?
Absolutely. So the position that was eliminated through her resignation was our crime analyst. There was a hiring moratorium at the time. We didn't backfill the position. It's my desire to not backfill it. I don't believe that we need it. We can supplement that through a few ways. One is technology, and the other is when we have a, a major crime series where we're having rooftop burglaries, robberies, the sheriff's department has come through for us on those cases, and we typically collaborate on things like that where it's considered a series of crimes. In this case, our day-to-day information getting out to patrol is still being done. It's being done in a more of an old-fashioned way, but we're very close to going live with a software program called Raids online, and that is day-to-day crime stats available to the officers, the public, day-to-day, updated.
Okay. Thank you very much. Yes, Councilmember Roscoe?
This is quite a 180 from your predecessor in terms of this position, and remember, quite frankly, about this discussion, as you remember, yeah, I think a couple of us, they've passed very closely, if I remember, about the need of that position. So I'm glad that you revisited it and took a look at it. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. And in understanding the technology that we, we have at our fingertips and needs to be utilized a lot more, because it makes things a lot cheaper for us to top, well, function differently, more effectively. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, with that, I'll make a motion to approve item K, if there are no other questions.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Roscoe, second by Lada, to approve 8K. Roll call. Councilmember Roscoe? Roll call, councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem White?
Yes.
Mayor Latta?
Aye.
O and P. What are the last two? So we have a public comment on, I believe, item O and P?
Correct.
So I'll go ahead and at 11:34, open up public comment on those two items? Can we take them together?
Yeah, I believe so, he said. Karen McKernan?
Good evening, Mayor, new mayor, congratulations, by the way.
Thank you.
And Pro Tem. Mayor and city council, I'm, the reason I'm up here before you is because it was my understanding from council that the prior POs were to terminate, and we were all going to bury the relationship with Urban Logic and put it away, and get away from it. If it's the direction of the city that they want to have an interim or a short PO with Urban Logic, we can do our best, I can do our best to help it, but the problem was, none of this was brought before me or discussed prior, so there's some issues, there's some scopes and costs on this that, that may be different from what may actually be required, specifically like max benefit. It changes each year, so it would be the cities, the city engineer who would work with the five other agencies to see which wells might be different this time, which, which obligation. So my concern is only that if, I just would like to have an opportunity to meet with staff, because no one approached me at all about this, and have an opportunity to say what the scope should be, what the, what the cost should be, because the cost on that is not related to anything that we did in the past, so I'm, I just want to be able to identify what, what the scope and the deliverables need to be. Because max benefit, this year, maybe Ukieppa is doing more of wells that Beaumont doesn't have to do, and it's going to rotate like that, and there's different obligations. You guys might be obligated, so I don't know if I'm, we're going to be obligated to do more, so I don't want to sign on if I, unless I know exactly what we're going to be obligated to do.
Okay.
That's fair. There was a series of emails exchanged between Karen and myself, and I thought we were on the same page.
Okay.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes.
If we table this to that meeting next week, would that be enough time?
Yes, but we are without max benefit services, and as you know, I added these two items to the agenda after the original agenda was posted.
Right.
This is, sorry, is this particular to P, right? Only P?
P and O.
Oh, yeah.
What is, what is your recommendation then that we do?
I recommend that we, that you approve the $50,000 for this company, for this service, and he and I will negotiate what will be done for that $50,000. We need this, this, this service, the regional board is going to question why we don't have it right now. The PO expired December 31st. I mirrored the previous PO to match the one that's before you tonight, so I'm not sure what's changed between December 31st and tonight, but Karen and I can certainly work that out. Bottom line is, I would like a PO for $50,000 for this company for max benefit.
And if that changes, you just bring?
Correct, I can bring it back on Tuesday if that changes.
Karen, do you, Mr. McKernan?
Are you comfortable with that?
As long as we can sit down, just to point out, the prior PO was $62,000, this one is $52,000, so there's a difference in, and I don't know how it was prorated or what the.
It wasn't, it was a flat dollar amount.
Right, I know, but for the prior six-month period, it was $62,000, and this one was this, so was there work diminished?
No.
Were there requirements removed?
Timeline on this is only 120 days.
And the timeline on the prior one, was that too? On the 60, on the one that had $62,000?
I don't have it before me, I thought it was for six months. I thought the prior one was for six months. We can change the dollar amount to $62,000.
Yeah, but in particular in that, though, it's the city engineer, well, it won't be your city engineer, it'll be your water specialist, and they need to meet with the other agencies to determine what max benefit changes are going to happen this year.
So are you, I'm sorry, are you comfortable with the $50,000, or?
I, I would need to sit down and see what, what the deliverables that the city needs to make sure that we're able to produce that for you.
The council gave that direction, so I think that's clear, and, and, you know, this, this was done because the contract expired, and, for example, plan check, and so it was a stopgap until you have an opportunity to, you know, award those services.
And the contract is still in effect, the purchase order expired, and because council was very clear, when the purchase order was approved, that you did not want that purchase order going past December 31st, then I stopped the work with, with Mr. McKernan.
Okay.
However.
That's correct.
The contract is still in effect, it's just a housekeeping item with the PO, so we can, I mean, from June 1st to December 31st, the fees were $72,911. I'm asking for it not to exceed $50,000, we can certainly change that at your, at your motion to $60,000, but either way, we are without that service right now.
May I ask a question?
It does not change the terms of the contract.
So basically, the contract's still in force, you're, we're giving you authorization to pay up to $50,000. When you, when you sit down with Mr. McKernan, if you determine it's more than, or if you use up the $50,000, you'll come back to us for?
Correct, and I'm hoping by that time we have staff that can do the RFP, this is a very complicated issue, and I'm not able to do it. So, the contract is still in place, we're not going to renegotiate.
You just need to be able to keep paying him.
I just need the means to pay him.
Would he feel?
I, I agree, the contract is in effect, it's just that usually, in, I think it's item, paragraph two of the contract or something, so that we discuss this first before any PO or anything is issued, we have, we have the ability to negotiate or discuss what things are before they're just handed to us. I, I know you said we had emails back and forth, but there was no discussion at all about what this was going to scope, was going to.
But if we approve.
I wasn't negotiating a contract.
Right, but if we.
No, no, not negotiating a contract, it's negotiating the terms of the task, it's, I think it specifically states that in the contract that if, if, I don't recall what paragraph it is, but the city attorney.
But if we approve this PO and you cannot come to an agreement, doesn't affect Mr. McKernan now, it's just, if you do come to an agreement, now you're ready to continue to pay him.
Okay.
So, I was always going to ask them, if I was interrupted, can we just approve that amount, which was the original, the first, up to that amount?
$72,911.
If we were to make a motion to?
Just so you all know, it may not even come to half of that, I just, my, my concern is more not the dollar amount, my concern more is the deliverables and making sure that what we're obligating ourselves to.
And I completely understand his position, I'm looking at timeframe.
That's what I'm saying, if we can.
Seven months on the old PO and four months on this PO, I don't agree that the dollar amount should be the same, but it's entirely up to council.
I was just saying, so we can save time, we can just approve up to that amount, doesn't necessarily he's going to get that, it gives you an ability to move forward and continue, so we won't be out of compliance, that's just an idea, you know?
I would like to make a motion that we approve both purchase orders as they're written right here, because you do have the flexibility to come back if we need more money, you do have the flexibility to pay Mr. McKernan, and you guys can work out your negotiation.
Just, for clarity's sake, though, when you guys now approve this PO, it's like a task, you know, I know you don't like, we're not using the words task order or job card or whatever, but it is a task, you're now authorizing me to do work, I would like a little time to sit down and make sure that we're all on the same page first, before we get ourselves into trouble for not performing if you come back tomorrow and say, hey, he didn't, he didn't put people out in the field.
authorize the city manager to issue the PO.
Okay.
Give her that.
I'll second it.
That authority.
I will second that.
So we have a first and a second.
So we have a first by White and a second by Knight. Are we authorizing POs as written?
No. They would be authorizing the city manager to issue the POs.
Okay. For O, I know it was for the interim plan check, surveying, and inspection, just to go back, because the proposal that was brought to us earlier today was only for plan checking. Are we cutting off surveying completely after, I mean, because surveying was not included in the RFP that was presented earlier today, that's going to be brought back to us later? Is it going to be separate?
The RFP was, the RFP for surveying was approved by council, it did go out, we did get responses.
So it's separate?
There's numerous, there, there's many responses that we need to go through and, and do the process.
Sure. Okay, that was different, that's why, it was separate.
Completely different.
So we have a first and a second?
First and a second, I'll take roll call. Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem White?
Yes.
Mayor Latta?
Yes.
Okay, we want to adjourn open session in honor of Jeff Fox, and we'll adjourn the meeting at, and go into, and then go into closed session?
Right, and we'll be going into closed session on item A, B, D, E, F, and G, since we already covered item C.
Yes.
And so we'll be going into closed session, and then we'll come back into this room to report out from closed session, and the public is entitled to remain for that report out if they wish to do so.